Okay, seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Amherst School Committee promptly at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, August 31st. And this meeting is being broadcast, streamed and recorded thanks to Amherst Media. Thanks for joining us again this season, Amherst Media. And for folks watching at home, when we get to it later in the meeting, there we will have a public forum and members of the public who wish to speak may join the Google Meet. If you want to just view and listen, you may watch through Amherst Media streaming or on TV. We are going to start with a roll call. When I call your name, please state present, Mr. Demling.
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. And we also have Dr. Slaughter and Dr. Morris joining us. And our new recorder, Meiling. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, but welcome. Our first item is approving minutes and we neglected to include those, so we will move right past that. This evening, we have one voice public comment which I'll play as I pull up the document. Oh, Dr. Morris.
We don't have to do it tonight, but I think the minutes were in the packet. They're on the packet I'm looking at that's online. But if people didn't have a chance to read it, I think they were added after the Friday. So there's no need to do it tonight, but I just wanted to note that they were in the packet. So if people are following along and saying, oh, I see them, that they're there. But if the committee didn't have an opportunity to review them, I think punting for a couple of weeks makes a lot of sense.
Are others on the committee okay with that or do we want to proceed? Okay, well, we'll punt till our next meeting.
Hello, my name is Deborah.
Sorry, yeah, we'll start that over again.
Yes, hello, my name is Deborah Rosenbaum and I and my children are Amherst residents. And I am calling to address the possible move of the Amherst sixth grade to the middle school and express my concerns about it. Today was the birthday that I sent my, one of my children to elementary school in person on the first day of school for an hopeful full school year in over 18 months. And she was thrilled, it was exciting. And if we think about what COVID has done in terms of elementary school children, the mental health implications as documented by the Amherst Academy of Pediatrics, surprising, I think, the elementary school children of the 18-plus month loss of in-person education appears to be unfair. I think that rushing to push this move to the fall of 2022 also doesn't take into account that we have a variant right now which may cause some issues in terms of how this school year looks, no matter how vigilant we are. These elementary children are not eligible right now for the vaccine, while many of the middle school children or students are. And I think also thinking about the continuity of leadership, which has been fairly well established in the elementary school, but is more short-term in the middle school. And I think until we have a leadership team set up there that has an established track record, the move would be not in the best interest of Amherst students. Thank you, and I appreciate your time. And I hope that you will give very thoughtful consideration to if this move is something that people support, doing it in a slowed-down method in light of everything that physically, mentally, psychosocially, and for all of us as a community that COVID has induced. Thank you.
I just got an, I'm trying to share my screen. I got an error message, let's see. There we go, sorry. If this document has not been published yet on our, posted on our agendas webpage, it will be on the Amherst School Committee agendas page on the arcs.org website. And it might be helpful reminder for the public that we accept public comment as voice message, as you heard on the, our public comment phone number line, which is always published in our agenda. And we accept email public comment. Both of these are due by 3:00 PM on the day of our meetings. And we scroll through these on screen, we do not read them aloud. And we publish the document of the email, the emailed comment on our website, either on the day of or the day after our meetings. With that, I'm going to, next up is our superintendent's update and I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris.
Sure, thank you. Lot of things, right? We haven't met in a while, so I'll try to be brief and do a little bit of a laundry list of different things that have happened. So starting off where we left off, in the spring, cooling at Fort River. As you might remember, last year, we had a terminal failure of the chiller unit for Fort River thanks to lots of great work. We, by our facilities team, we had portable chillers installed. And I'm just going to note that as people are joining us perhaps to participate in the public forum, I'm going to allow them in and just ask people to mute both their voice and their video until it's time for them. But I'm going to just, I'm not going to make people wait in a queue. I think they're welcome to come. And so that system's working well. Frankly, it's working better than the old unit from 1973 was. So we're continuing with the rental of that unit through the fall with the existing capital fund we already had for this projected problem. We proactively asked for and the town proactively supported us in. When we get to the spring, we will have to have a conversation with both the school committee and the town about what makes most sense, either rental of, you know, long-term rental of the same kind of, same, literally, maybe literally the same unit or a purchase of a similar unit which can be reused in different buildings across the town after Fort River no longer needs it. So at the current time, the thing that I feel good about is we do have a cooling system at Fort River. It's working at high levels of success in terms of cooling buildings, including on the first day where it was sort of hot and sticky and it was really working. Fortunately, the next two weeks looks like a lot of low 70s sunny days. So that'll be a good thing for all of us probably collectively. But that's in good shape and it is working. Also, over the summer, the town of Amherst had a project, a new drainage swale at Fort River has been completed. So they worked with us that improves the water quality in the Fort River watershed. But it also will support that the grass, new grass takes hold and doesn't erode as much in the summer/fall rainy season. So it's both good for the environment, but also will contribute to the fields around Fort River as well. So thanks to Dave Zolmack and the town for working on that. We, let's see, a couple of other things. We have tentative agreements with both the APEA, which we'll talk, both of these are regional topics, but they affect the Amherst elementary schools. Tendative agreements for one-year extensions with the Amherst Palma Educators Association. So that's teachers, parent educators, clerical staff. And UFCW, which is the food service workers. So again, that'll come up in the regional level, but I did want to share that publicly with the committee and the community because it does impact the budget and many other things in terms of the Amherst public schools. We worked with a new partner this year for the backpack giveaways. We got, they were really nice backpacks with fully stocked, not that our other ones weren't, but Crans the Cradles is the organization. So we were able to have enough for every single elementary student who wanted one. We had some extras we gave them to school for students to come throughout the year or get rips and all those things. And thanks to Marta Guevara and the family center, which is always a really nice thing. It was like one of those days where it was like crazy downpour rain and we still had lots of people coming in right outside my office to pick up their backpacks and supplies. We also had some donations of books so that people could leave, not just with school supplies, but also some books to read before the school year started for elementary students. Sorry, there's a lot. So we weren't able to do first day on the common because the town fair was there. And, but what we did in lieu of that was we had ice cream events at all four of our, three of our Amherst elementary schools. They were really well attended, well appreciated. It happened to be like a 92-degree sunny day, so a great day for people to enjoy ice cream. And it was just really nice to have a social event for folks as they entered the school year and kids to be with other kids. And it happened to be on the first day for staff, so a lot of staff are around afterwards and got to hang out with kids and families. And, you know, really appreciate transportation, took the lead on that and food services. So, you know, we were looking at running like ice cream trucks, but we made our own ice cream buses and vans. And it worked really well. So thanks for everyone who put that on, principals in particular also were there helping hand out ice cream and greeting folks. New teacher orient, new teachers in general. So we had, this is the first year that I, we have records of, where over 50% of the new hires identify as people of color. That's been a longstanding goal of both the district and the committee. Four years in a row, we've had increasing numbers of our, the diversity of our new hires. So thanks to, you know, the principals, the HR team, the recruit, you know, doing recruitment. And they're outstanding. I get to spend hour and a half with those folks at new teacher orientation. They're going to bring a lot to our district in every single way. So that was, that's, I wanted to share that and it's a great group. Three of you are able to attend convocation. Thank you for being there and thanks, Ms. McDonald, for welcoming the year with all our faculty and staff. We did a little different. We did elementary convocation and a secondary convocation, but our elementary folks went first. And it was really nice doing it outside. You know, obviously, it was, it was thought about kind of safety precautions given the size of the group. It was really pleasant. Like, I don't want to go to a dark auditorium again unless it rains, you know, separate from COVID. So I think it's one of these, you know, silver linings, overused phrase for this time, but I think it's one of our new learnings is, you know, we always went to the auditorium because it's what we always did. And there's a lot of other options out there. We just did in the middle school parking lot, potholes and all. And, you know, everybody, you know, most people brought their own chairs and it was, it was just really, really nice. Really enjoyed it. So, but thank you, the three of you who were able to come. And I know the other two of you would have liked to have been there as well. We, going back also a little to July, we did a digital culture event with Project Young Eyes that was well-attended about online safety that Marta Guevara and the family center organized. And we had really good attendance and we shared out that we were able to record the video of the presentation and the questions and that got shared out. So thanks for Marta for that. Okay, sorry, we've got a couple more. I apologize for the length, but lots going on. We had admin week a couple of weeks ago, retreat day. We have a lot of new members of our administrative team reading the book Think Again by Adam Grant. We had a training on anti-bias work from Mark Terry, the attorney for the district and the human resources team. But much of the time was spent planning for the year, both from a health and safety perspective, but also from a learning perspective, knowing that it's a different year and how do we right-size our approach for students who have had very differential experiences for a whole host of reasons over the last 18 months. But it was a strong team and a really, really powerful three days. One of the challenging areas we're working on right now is we're part of a regional and nationwide shortage of bus and van drivers. So saying this publicly, because if you know someone who's thinking about, oh, that might be something I'd want to do, looking for work, working for this kind of work, working to work in this community, it's a very supportive team. We are struggling with bus and van drivers. There was a big article in Eastern Mass Districts, Framingham, a couple others the other day. And we're no different and we're trying to problem solve and brainstorm both with our own staff as well as Five Star who's works with us on transportation. But we'll be putting lots of plugs out and seeing if we can drum up some more, more folks who are interested in that rewarding career that's so critical for our students. Last two things I think I have, one is in the very near future, we're going to be transitioning this committee to using something called Board Docs. It's the software that many, many districts across the country use for public boards, not just school committees, but town councils, things like that. The user interface for the public is much, much, much more user-friendly, to say the least. When you get to a different agenda item, you can click on it, the attachments are all there. You can look back at notes, you can do searches of previous meetings in a way, almost like a Google search. So we're looking forward, it's, we may be able to roll it out next week at Region. We're working hard at that. But it's, I think it's, you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback over the years that people do, in this community, do want to go back and look at the videos, look at the minutes. And we love that, you know, we want to encourage that. So the migration from our old system to new system will take a while, but we're really excited to get that up and running. And lastly, we work, we are working with the Collaborative Educational Service in North Hampton, which is our website vendor to have a new interface and rollout of the website, not the Board Docs, but our just general ARPS website. I think that's probably a couple of weeks away to fine-tune that, but it's got a much more attractive front page with easier-to-find navigation on there. So I will stop now because I'm probably over my time, but, you know, you know me for a little while and got a lot to share. So, oh, you know, oh yeah, school started, so little thing like that. Really thanks to everyone for a smooth start of the school year. I've been in every, all three of the schools since students came back. And it's been fabulous. It's really great to see smiling faces, you know, they're smiling under their masks or you see them outside and their masks are off. Wildwood had a lovely, you know, first day opening. We used to do it all packed together in the gym and they did it outside, but still celebratory. And, you know, it's, you know, really want to thank the educators for doing such a great job on this. And, you know, we're still in COVID, right? It's not a post-COVID era by any stretch of the imagination. But their welcoming spirit has been, you know, made the difference for students. And we have a lot of students who haven't been in the building either ever or in 18 months since we stayed remote last spring. And principals did a great job with outreach and making sure that families and students felt supported in returning to the building. So, sorry for leaving out the most important thing to the end, but I think we'll probably talk, talk about that a lot when we talk about health and safety, some of the other agenda topics for tonight.
And so, which I'm glad you mentioned that because if we have any question, any questions that any of us have for the superintendent regarding specifically the COVID health and safety, if you could hold those for when we get to that topic later because we have a chunk of our agenda time allotted for that discussion. But any other questions for the superintendent? Is that a hand, Ms. Lord? No. Seeing none. And I will move on then to, thank you, Dr. Morris, for that, that comprehensive update. And I will also say, as we segue into the chair's update, that I've been introduced and got sort of an intro, a training introduction to the Board Docs. And I'm thrilled for getting that up and running. It's going to, I think, really make our lives as committee members a lot easier and help us really be organized. And then from, from the community's perspective, I think that it will be a tremendous tool for really staying connected and engaged with, with what's going on in the school committee. So I look forward to when we can roll that out. And so for my update, I'll be brief, but I just want to say welcome back. It's been, we saw each other recently at the, at a meeting of another committee that we're all on, but this is the first convening of the Amherst School Committee of this new school year. Enjoyed summer and was able to unplug and recharge after last year was being such an intense year. But I, we talked about this at the end of the year, but I think it's important to state it again that we put in a tremendous amount of work and yet we really pulled together as as in our different opinions and, and coming, making decisions for the good of the community and our school community. This year, we have a lot, again, on our plates and tonight's agenda is a testament to that. But I'm confident that we will be able to work through this. And, and we're stronger for our experience last year, I think, as a committee. And I really do look forward to working together with all of you and the district in, in support of our students and our overall school community. So I just wanted to share that as sort of our kickoff. We didn't retreat, but that's our little kickoff for this year. And with that, I'm going to move on to school committee announcements. Does anybody from the committee have an announcement they'd like to share? Not seeing any. Great, so we will move on to our new and continuing business. And our first item is our presentation discussion and public forum on considering a possible move of sixth grade students to the middle school. And as we move into the presentation, just some sort of ground rules for, for the public forum. And anybody from the community who wishes to speak and be heard and may join the Google Meet, which was, the link was posted in the agenda. Dr. Morris will call on you and unmute you as we go one by one through those of you who've joined us. And we ask that you try to limit your comments or questions to three minutes in total. And this is from, from the public forum perspective, it, it's not really a discussion. It's a chance for the school committee to hear your comments, your perspectives. And then also, we may be able to answer some questions that come up. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris.
Sure, and when we get to that, I can remind folks, but we'll use the raise hand feature, which is literally just the hand towards the bottom of your screen if you'd like to participate in that forum. But, you know, thanks for the introduction. Some of these slides, for those of you who are frequent school committee watchers, will look familiar. Some things, you know, have developed in terms of sixth grade, but a lot of the core principles remain the same as when we talked about this in the spring. So I think the background, I know for some people feels cumbersome, but I think it's important because every time we present in a public meeting, I think it's important to remember where this came from. So, you know, now we're looking at three, four years ago that there was a facilities use study done. And this really came from four-town meetings. Four-town meetings are when officials from Amherst, Leverett, Pelham and Chootsbury, sort of ironically for this conversation, get together to look at the regional budget and the regional assessment. And so this happens two or three times a winter. And we got frequent requests to take a look at a couple of different grade level models, one of which was looking, could this seven through 12 combined into one building? Another one was, could sixth grade students fit at the middle school? And I think it's important to note it came from a financial perspective. That's, most of our conversations is the four-town focus on that. So because it was a frequent question that we received, I often came to be answering those in ways that centered, centered around two concepts. Yeah, I think the kids will fit, or I don't think the kids will fit, which is not really a sufficient response to the level of inquiry that we were having. So we requested funds, brought in a team of licensed architects and completed a full study. And this is all online with the link to the full study, which is many hundreds of pages. And a shorter presentation that was made to the school committee is also linked there. But the summary was that the sixth grade students can fit within the current Amherst Regional Middle School building due to an inclining enrollment in the district. Our middle school has had, right now, it's got about 430 students and that's projected to decline significantly over the next few years. These two grade levels that are in our middle school now are two largest classes for several cycles. Actually, they're, they're larger than any of the classes beneath them, all the way down to kindergarten. And so, and this school used to hold about 600 students, well over 600 students in the past. The short story on seven through 12 is they don't fit without a multimillion-dollar expansion. So one of the reasons we're not talking about that is, you know, sort of was a rule out. So it really came from this facilities use study, but I think it's important to note that significant work was done during that time period to look at this from a facilities perspective. It also recommended improvements like creation of a makerspace, you know, some paintings, some wayfaring signs, there were other things. But in terms of literal space that we need to build to fit sixth grade, the answer was no, the students could fit. After that, I made a recommendation to the Regional School Committee in 2019 to conduct a study process to look at what are models exploring sixth grade, six through eight. It was a community group, had staff members, community members. Was facilitated by a consultant from ALME, which is an association of middle-level education. And we got to visit JFK Middle School, which is a sixth grade middle school in North Hampton, which was a really powerful experience. And the report was completed. I do want to note, we were supposed to really get together and truly finish the report right as the pandemic started. So, you know, what was in the report was literally directly what the subgroups came up with and that is linked there. I think probably another meeting or two would have been really helpful for that group. I see Ms. Cunningham's on here, she was a critical contributor to that group. And the work, I think, stands up in terms of some of the implications and concerns that were expressed and potential benefits. So the primary considerations for me now, only speaking for myself, are uh, one is to look at what's the prevalence of sixth grade, sixth grade, middle schools? In other words, would we be doing something that has never been done before or is atypical? Or is something that people are, um, not doing in other communities similar to ours? The second is what are the current space issues in the Amherst Elementary Schools? The third is about the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Project and the decision that's coming up. You know, sooner than we, than folks might think. Uh, so I want to kind of parse those apart as three distinct issues. Um, and there's a lot of words in the slide, but I'll, I'll try to summarize it without reading. Uh, the short story is the six through eight, grade six through eight middle schools are the most common, uh, grade span in both Massachusetts and the United States. And I'm not advocating for being better or worse than others. I think we'll talk about that. But it's not, looking at this option isn't looking at something that's never been done and not been successful in other places. This goes back to the sixties and seventies where many communities across Massachusetts and the United States recognized it, recognized that a grade seven through eight middle school, having only two years in a middle school was really hard to have continuity. Students are entering in seventh and then in eighth leaving, and, uh, that was a challenge. And a lot, many of them moved to a grade six through eight model, you know, particularly seventies, eighties, nineties. In terms of our comparison districts, uh, we always first look to MCAN, our Minority Student Achievement Network. So only 10% of that network uses a grade seven through eight model and the vast majority use a six through eight model. Uh, looking comparison districts in Massachusetts, ones that we often compare ourselves to in a variety of ways. Newton, Brookline, Cambridge, North Hampton, Long Meadow and Framingham. Almost all except Brookline use a K to five model, um, Brookline uses a K to eight model. Uh, again, not to say that it's better or worse, but I think it is important for me to share with the community that looking at a grade six through eight model is not looking at something that's radically different from what actually frankly, most other similar communities have made choices to have. Uh, and the third point is that if the school committee votes in October to move sixth grade to the middle school, what we'd want to do is work with, uh, another group of stakeholders, uh, primarily staff members who'd be part of the change, both at the middle school and sixth grade, uh, levels, consult with experts in the field and try to develop a model. In other words, we're not trying to develop a model in the next couple of weeks. You know, speaking to educators, um, who are interested in this, one way or the other, they want to just be part of that change if it is going to happen. So what we're looking for the school committee to do is to make a decision, in early October, says enough time to plan if it is to be implemented in the fall of 2022. And, and I think the next slide has my summary, uh, which is, I feel very confident we have incredibly talented educators and, and community members who are invested, that we can develop an engaging model for early adolescent student. There's a myriad of questions. What do we do with world language? For instance, some sixth grade models at, at a middle school have an elect, um, like they expose them to all four languages, one each quarter, and then have students choose what they want to study in seventh grade. Others allow sixth grade students to engage in one language right off the bat in sixth grade. Uh, some middle school models involve sixth grade students kind of maintaining like two teachers instead of a full team of four. So someone teaching math and science typically, and someone teaching ELA and social studies. Some sixth grades, uh, six, eighth grades, uh, middle schools integrate those students into the full team model, uh, with no difference from seventh and eighth grade. So there's a lot of decisions that get made, uh, that would need to get made. And I think my commitment would be if the school committee goes in this direction to engage educators, the community to make decisions that are consistent with what the community would want for a sixth grade experience, uh, located inside a middle school. I think it's worth noting, uh, just as an aside, that I think if this is to move forward, I think it's unlikely, uh, for a whole host of reasons, that the regional agreement would be amended in time for a change. And I think that'd be a complicated process. So really, we'd be talking about sixth grade students being retained as Amherst Public School students, um, being educated in Amherst Regional Middle School. And I think that gives the Amherst School Committee, uh, incredible amount of leverage to make decisions that, um, it feels best and, and we feel best, uh, for sixth grade students. In other words, they don't like get subsumed in to the regional school district. I know you sit on both, but, but I think it is just an important distinction, uh, that, uh, nothing that I would propose would shift those students to being, um, under the auspices of the region, uh, as they hit, uh, if that change was to happen. So that's my last slide on this first point about models. Uh, I wondered if I'd pause and see if any school committee members have any questions.
Any questions? Not seeing any.
Okay. Then I will continue. So now I would go to space issues that we have. There was a meeting two, three weeks ago, uh, where the principals laid all this out. I know many people, uh, saw that either live or saw the recording of that. So I think I will go over this again, but again, I apologize for those of you who are avid, uh, Amherst Elementary School. Folks that, you know, this is going to seem like old news to you. So we have a lot of space issues, having been in the schools over the last, uh, couple of days and even last week before students arrived, uh, students came, we have a, we have, it's really tight. And, you know, I think particularly during COVID, that's a particular concern. So at Fort River and Wildwood, we've lost 12 classroom spaces at each site because we used to have, there's six quads. That used to be 24 distinct instructional spaces, uh, the quads that went away. We now have havesies. So we have 12 instructional spaces, uh, from a ventilation perspective, a COVID safety perspective. That's fabulous. From an instructional pers- space, instructional, um, perspective, it has created significant challenges. So we've lost cafeteria spaces for student lunches. Uh, there are no student lunches, um, happening at Wildwood and Fort River and the cafeterias. Um, and, you know, at Crocker Farm, the fact that we are able to split students where some eat in the calf and some eat in their classroom has been really helpful. There are staffing implications of that. It creates a real challenge to make sure that there's enough staff to monitor lunches in all those rooms. Cafeterias tend to be very efficient in terms of staffing models. Some staffing specialist teachers have lost their instructional spaces or art music. Some of them are using sort of makeshift spaces, um, technology as well. Make shift spaces for their things and teaching, um, in classrooms. And our teachers have done a fabulous job of that. And I've never been an art teacher. But one thing I know is it means, you know, they may not be next to their kiln, uh, and they may have to shift their programming that way. Uh, and this problem will get more acute at Fort River over time because every year they add a grade level because of the coming up days. So however tight it is this year, it'll be even more tight, uh, in future years. Instructionally, I think it's been really hard to find spaces for our pullout programs and ELL, special ed and reading math intervention services. We believe in inclusion. You've heard me say that. Uh, if you've been on the committee a while, have been watching, you know, we do a lot of work for team teaching and inclusion. And for some students, they do need services outside the gen ed classroom. They need to be in a separate space and those separate spaces are few and far between. Particularly, actually at all schools, I would include Crocker Farm in that, uh, equation as well. Uh, and that includes math and, and reading intervention. And so we are challenged and, and those are our students who, if you look at achievement data as well as, uh, long longitudinal data, those are students who are the most underserved and historically underserved, uh, in our community and many others. So it is a deep concern that we don't have, uh, the spaces we want to work with the students, um, who, who most needed additional support. Instrumental music teachers, again, incredibly creative group. They, they, they were incredible last spring, um, in finding spaces. But it's always been a challenge in our schools and now it's, it's again, an even more, uh, even larger challenge to find space for instrumental music teachers. They're doing a lot of this outside, but, uh, we happen to live in New England. If you're living in San Diego, perhaps that you can get by with that a little bit longer than you can in Amherst, Massachusetts. So, uh, we have, we have a lot of these challenges. And I think the thing that's not on here that I think I want to say is if we had more spaces, we could space students differently. You know, so when we think about COVID and we think about, and I, you know, I hate to be a pessimist, but I don't think COVID is going to be gone. You know, six months from now or nine months from now, I think it's going to be with us and we're going to be having these conversations, uh, for quite some time. The space needs, um, are even that much more important. So, um, I'm not going to go over the maps. I think I've done that at school committee meetings. We did it a couple of weeks ago. They've shifted a bit, um, since, uh, last spring and we, we shared the updated maps a couple of weeks ago when we did the public session. But it, it, it is a particular challenge. Our preschool program's expanding. Uh, as you can see at Crocker Farm, uh, as, as we provide more space for preschool, as we have more students identified, that pushes more into Crocker Farm. So it's not just a Wildwood or Fort River concern. It, it's really across the board. Uh, you could see that we're struggling to find spaces for staff lunches, you know, so this, you know, lunch is a, is a time we're particularly aware of during COVID. Uh, but even beyond that, we think, you know, staff should be able to eat together. That's a kind of typical thing we want staff to be able to do and have a space. Now everything is a multi-use space and everything's being scheduled and, you know, we're competing with, should staff have a space to eat or should, um, first graders who are struggling with reading have a, have a distinct space to receive intervention? These are choices that I don't believe we should be making, having to make. Um, and Fort River and Wildwood, uh, again, very, very full. So that's the end of our, our space, uh, part of this. And I'm trying to be brief again to get to the forum. But, um, are there any questions the committee has on the current status and situation of space? Okay, not seeing any. I think I'll roll to the third part, which is the MSBA decision. So MSBA, uh, we were fortunate to be, um, apply and be accepted back into their cross, cross programming, uh, process. Uh, we applied for multiple enrollment options. Uh, the way the MSDA works is they, uh, they're paying for, you know, oral on half the project. Uh, they're going to only allow us certain enrollments to study. And the only two enrollment they allowed us to study were a 320 student option, uh, would only address Fort River and sixth grade would be able to stay at the elementary level. Nothing would happen at Wildwood. And option B, uh, would be 570 students, oh, 575 students, excuse me. Sixth grade would move to the middle school and Fort River and Wildwood would be either replaced and or renovated, um, in that process. Um, so I want to be really clear, there are no, there is no third option. And they were incredibly clear with myself, with Ms. Shane, who's the chair of the committee and Mr. Bachman, to not come back to them with additional options that, you know, they're seeing, you know, they've been with us before. A sign of readiness is that we're willing to accept the options they presented. Um, and anything else is a sign that we're not ready and we should, you know, perhaps get the town, the town it is, should get, um, connected and, uh, show more readiness in the future. So, you know, it wasn't for lack of trying, you know, 220 is actually an awkward size. One of the things I asked for is, well, 280 would be sort of better because if we're talking about coming on days only, then I'm not sure what, you know, would have additional space and, and, um, but this is where they landed with their options. And so I tried to make a table, I'm sorry, the text may be a little small, but this is online as well, uh, of the implications, uh, for the different options. So option A for 320 students, it means that Wildwood, um, anything major that would happen in terms of renovation or new construction would need to be completed at a significantly later date. The project only addressed Fort River. Uh, special teachers continue not to have their own instructional spaces that connects also to cafeterias, uh, perhaps not being available for, um, soon lunches. And it's not just that they're not available for student lunches, they're being used for classrooms, uh, which is suboptimal. I mean, I think our facilities team and IS team has done a great job making it classroom-ish. Uh, that's going to be someone's quote. I shouldn't have, I got to be careful with my language, but, um, but, but they're not, they don't have the feel of, of true classrooms. I want to be really transparent and honest about that. It's awkward. They have the sort of faux-ish walls. They're not real walls to separate them. Um, there is a dishwasher running, you know, some of the time, which does make noise and there's meals coming in and out. So it, you know, I think it's, I think everyone would agree they're suboptimal classroom spaces. And, and that would continue. Uh, once a project completed, Fort River at 320 students would have to, you know, the only way I can consider it is it would have to become coming on days only school. Uh, and that means all the grade levels of non coming on days, Fort River students. So one per grade level at the time of the project, probably five or six grade levels, um, would need to transfer to another school. We'd have to figure out where they would fit. Um, so that's an, that's a pretty significant thing for me is that students who've been to Fort River, um, who aren't coming on days would no longer be Fort River students, even if they lived across the street. I really worry about Fort River running out of space three, four years from now when the building's not done, um, as it expands. Because, you know, we're at, um, the cl- number of classrooms we're at will increase by one each year, four years from now. I don't know where that third and fourth classroom would go. Maybe we can get by another year after this one at Fort River. And then we, we really just run out of space. And then we're talking about, you know, some bad solutions like redistricting, renting mobile classrooms, uh, Mr. Harrington and his team did some work on that. And it was about $300,000 for a true full classroom, um, and, and losing some of the outdoor space we'd want. And, and I think a significant one too, is once the project completed, I, I don't think Ames and building blocks could stay at Fort River. Cause if it's a common edge, it's only program, um, there's going to be Ames and building block students. Some of our specialized, special education programs, uh, would primarily be in other programs. They're not barred from, you know, coming on days by any stretch, but most of those students enter later than kindergarten and don't enter the coming on days program. So we'd be relocating, uh, two programs of some of our most vulnerable learners, uh, as part of that, as the end of that project. On the flip side, for the 575 option B, um, we'd have to develop a sixth grade program. And we'd have to make sure that the implementation was successful for that. That's something we haven't done before. Right? So you have the timeline for renovation, new construction. We'd know that. We could open up, you know, the cafeterias and our art and music rooms, uh, once sixth grade moves up to ease the space issues. Fort River would, you know, continue to be very full, but, um, we don't think we'd require redistricting or renting mobile classrooms as it increases inside over the next three or four years. Specialized, especially ed programs could remain at Fort River. Uh, and Fort River students, not of the comment, it is, we're going to not need to transition to Wildwood or Fort River. Or Wildwood or Crocker Farm. So, so I'd read that slide, but I know the text was small, so I want to make sure people viewing, uh, were able to hear that. But I think the big one, I, I want to just be honest that the top one, the sixth grade program need to be developed and implemented is a really, really significant endeavor. Um, and, and critically important at a critical age. So I know, you know, you look at these and you say it's a no brainer and you may still think that, but I, I don't want to de-emphasize the fact that, um, sixth grade, the middle school is something that we'd have to develop with staff, with the community. Um, and it would, it would be something new and there's loss in that. I was a former sixth grade teacher at Fort River, so I started in 2001. Uh, if I was on this call with that hat on, you know, I'd be really struggling with thinking about, uh, the program that's been built so wonderfully at the elementary level and, and have anxiety, uh, about what that would look like at the middle school. So next step, so that we'll do some public forums tonight, um, is kind of a briefer public forum. I imagine the nine 21, the September 21st meeting will get, uh, more public comment as we get closer to decision. Also have a less presentation, so there'll be more opportunities for, for, for that, uh, the public session part of it. We're going to do a feedback tool. We're developing it and Chris Agamire, who's a sixth grade teacher at Wildwood, has agreed to help us with, developing or approving that tool. So it's really great. And thanks to Chris for, um, his support in that, because it's really helpful to have a sixth grade teacher vetting it and, and taking a look at that. Um, so thank you, Chris. Uh, what we talked about is school committee vote in October, October 5th. So that gives enough time for both the region to consider this, but also for, um, a group to be formed to develop that program if it's intended for fall of 22 or even fall of 23, we do want to get to work right away on that. If you're really talking about when the building projects, you know, waiting till the project is complete and, you know, 2026, then we probably have a little time to, uh, organize that. So if the votes are moved to move the sixth graders, we'd work with the committees on the logistics and rental agreements with the region, develop a task force to develop what that program looks like. We'd have to work with human resources and staffing shifts. Uh, and again, explore infrastructure improvements such as maker space, wayfinding signage, et cetera. And that relates to, uh, a topic later on the agenda, which is, uh, stimulus funds and, and working with the town of Amherst, um, to make sure that some of these improvements will be funded if the decision is made, uh, not out of the operating budget, but finding other sources, uh, for that. And that is the end of my presentation. So, um, I don't know if the chair would like to open up for the community first or the committee, however you'd like to do it, uh, works for me.
I think we'll start first with, um, any committee questions. I know we haven't had questions along the way, but, um, and, and I'll just start just a point of clarification. I know the answer to this, but I just want to say it out loud, given some of the public comment that we heard earlier. You, you've talked about, there's no third option. Um, and so to be clear, there's, there is no option where there's a K through six combined, um, building for Fort River and Wildwood. It's either K through five to replace both or case through six to replace Fort River.
Yeah. Now there's a binary choice. I mean, I guess the third option, if I'm being quite literal about it, is to not renovate or rebuild the buildings. Um, and I don't mean to be flip about it, but I just think, you know, that, that'd be the, I guess, the third option. So leave the buildings as they are.
Yep. Any questions from the committee before we move on to public forum? Mr. Dently? You're muted, Peter.
Yep, I'll, I'll never learn. Um, so you mentioned in that table of the options, um, but if we don't move sixth grade to the middle school, then the MSBA option that remains, um, means that we can't take care of Wildwood at all. Can you talk about what are the financial implic- and we've talked about educationally in space. Can you talk about what are the financial implications to keeping Wildwood basically for the foreseeable, foreseeable future for, for many years in the future? What would, how would that impact our, our fin- short term and long term financial picture?
So it's not a, it's, it's not a pretty picture. So on the financial side, you know, we'll have the roof that we'll have to take a look at and then not to distant future. Uh, much like Fort River's chiller failed, I think the Wildwood chiller is well beyond its expected useful life. And we would anticipate that failing, um, by the time that this was worked on and, and, excuse me. Um, so that would be another one, but I think more than that, it's, um, some of the financial pieces, um, are important, but, uh, sort of interestingly enough, and I hope this isn't, um, ignoring your question, some of the problems that the schools can't be solved by just simple money, like, you know, like our know, like our HVAC system that we can't put in a high quality HVAC system, retrofit it in the building, just you'd be ripping up the whole building, right? You know, the univents and things like that, they're not easily replaced. And so I think one of the challenges is it'd be a lot of expense along the way in the ways that I spoke about, but you wouldn't see the improvements that the actual structure of the building and the space issues would continue to remain long term. So, you know, for instance, yesterday was a very, very humid day. And so when I was at Wildwood, what you notice is you walk in the front door, which gets opened, you know, with some regularity, and the floors felt wet, right? And they felt wet because the humidity control in a building like Wildwood, which was built in 1970 with very, very far outdated HVAC systems can't account for that, can't account for swings in humidity that we get in the summer, fall and early fall and late spring in particular. When we get to winter and the temperature regulation, building classroom to classroom goes up and down, you can't control for those things. So there's the financial implications and the big ticket items like roof and cooling and those kinds of systems. But then you have the non monetary costs of a very not green system for heating and cooling that doesn't work all that way well and doesn't control the humidity in the way that we wanted to control humidity. So that's a factor on a multiple levels, but that's just like, you know, sort of the tip of the iceberg of sort of the routine day to day challenges, right? We have windows that are outdated, right? The middle school, we got an MSBA project a couple of years ago for windows and we have really, really nice windows that are good for insulation, they work well, they open well. So, you know, you, you start looking at all the challenges that exist in those schools and they're too numerous to fix. And some of them just, it's really hard to address those in any reasonable way over a summer period because the schools are operational 10 months a year. So there's financial implications, but there's also sort of unsolvable problems unless you're involved in a major renovation or rebuilding project. Does that help address what you were mentioning? Okay. I didn't want to, I know I got off financial, but I think it's all part of the same package.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee members? Ms. Fitzpatrick?
And this is more of a comment than I think than a question, but I think it might be helpful for the public, which is just that related to kind of this cost question and the question if there's like a third way. I just wanted to remind everybody and myself that you, you have looked into the potential for purchasing or renting mobile classrooms, for lack of a better term, to kind of deal with the short term loss of space that, well, it's now becoming long term, but to deal with the, the, the trouble that has been created as a result of creating improved ventilation in both Crocker Farm and Wildwood and Fort River.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's a problem. I mean, I know where you see it often is where districts are doing a renovation of a school and they need swing space and they don't have swing space and you rent it and it ends up being incredibly more expensive. And especially if you want to have water and things like that, which at elementary level, at high school level, you might trust students to walk into a building and go to the bathroom. At elementary level, you really want to be cautious about that. So the costs are very real and then the loss of outside space because it would be, you know, one of the, like, if you're thinking about Wildwood, you'd probably look to, you know, right behind it or a basketball court, using one of those. And, and there's a real loss in that. So, you know, at the end of post, the end of building projects, when people have had mobile classrooms, no one thinks about them fondly. I got to Crocker Farm as a principal and assistant principal, 2007, 2008, that building project was five years old. I was still hearing about being in the mobiles and all the challenges with that when I got there and I wasn't there at the time. So we've looked at it, it's incredibly expensive and brings about a lot of challenges for students. It's also very challenging in terms of accessibility for any students who have, or adults who have mobility challenges, creates another hurdle that way as well. Mr. Harrington, I don't mean to put you on the spot. If there's anything I'm missing on that front, then, because I know he is more knowledgeable about a lot of these things than I am.
You know, absolutely. And I just wanted to point out, like, in terms of cost, like, the cost there was the leasing fee annually, but there's, I mean, it would cost a lot more to actually install them. And then there's like a removal fee at the end. So like, I mean, it's a multimillion dollar situation over what by? Just add that little piece.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. And so with that, we can move on to our public forum. And we'll, we'll go one by one through, to hear from the members of the community that have joined us in the Google Meet. And as Dr. Morris mentioned earlier, please use the raise hand function, which is in the lower portion of your screen, pretty much centered, you see a little hand. And if you click on that, then you'll be unmuted and able to speak for up to three minutes.
So just to reiterate the point and give a little thought, think time. So I think the committee has asked its question. So if you are on this call and intending to participate, if you do put the raise hand button, if you're struggling with that, you can just unmute yourself. And as I'm the technical host of the meeting, I can manage that, I think, well enough. I think we are still in Amherst, Ms. McDonald. So I'm just surprised, but maybe there's a little bit of a lag from when we're talking to when people are receiving the information. There we go. Thank you. And I know we're getting to this nine minutes early, so we want to make sure that we don't close until that happens. But let's see. So Ms. Fernandez Anderson, I think, has her hand up. So do you want me to run this part? Because I'm managing the technical parts of the meeting?
I think that makes the most sense. And just, and thank you also for calling that out. We will keep the public forum open until 8:00 PM, or until all of the folks that are present right now have had a chance to speak.
Hi, yes, can I speak now? Yeah, so I'm the mother of two kids at elementary school. One is in fifth grade. So this will, you know, this decision will impact her directly. So my concern is that this has been a little bit rushed, you know, that like, my kid is now in fifth grade and we still don't know, is this her last elementary school year? You know, will she be there next year? It is a little bit too rushed to kind of prepare a strong pedagogical, you know, program for next year. So I understand the need for moving it for having the new buildings and I support that. But why does it have to be, you know, next year? And I add to some of the comments, you know, to highlight some of the comments that were mentioned, that, you know, these kids already lost, you know, a year and a half of in-person school, you know, wouldn't it be good that they actually finish in this elementary school? And the other thing I'm a little bit worried and correct me if I'm wrong, but I only see 14 participants in this forum, which I'm very surprised, in which it was not publicized correctly, if it was only 14. This is what I see in my screen. Well, for example, I'm a parent of a fifth grader and I didn't get any email advertising these. I found out through a friend. So I would really, you know, hope that the, the, then future forums, you know, have better publicity so that we can participate because definitely for the fifth grade families, I think it will be a direct impact of what will happen next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morris?
Yeah. And I know not everyone reads every email I send, so I want to be really conscious of that. So it's not at all to disagree with the comments that were made, but we did put this as a, we included a paragraph with a link to the meeting and information in the newsletter that went out on Friday. I know this time of year, there's a lot of emails that go out. It's one of our challenges of communication is how do we, when people are getting, you know, registration forms and food, just lunch forms and, and all these things. I think it is a real challenge of communication. So it's not at all to disagree with that comment, but, you know, if there is feedback on other ways, that would be helpful. But thank you for the comments.
I'll also add that, that we do have a second forum planned in addition to the feedback survey that will be going out to families. And that forum will be on September 21st and we'll make sure that that has plenty of lead time for publication. Just a reminder to raise your hand and use the raise hand function to be invited to speak.
Yep. And I just, can I just note also, I see that there is someone who is attending via phone. So if you are attending via phone and there's, if someone has spoken and there's not another hand up, please just unmute yourself because I think you may struggle to show the raise hand feature if you're joining by phone. Sorry to interrupt you, Ms. McDonald, but there is a hand up. So, looks like, yep, Maria, you're welcome to jump in.
So I guess I'm, I was just unclear, is this affecting every elementary school or you're just concerned about Crocker Farm and Fort River as of right now?
It would be all Amherst Elementary Schools and so all Amherst Elementary sixth graders.
Okay, okay. I guess I would just agree with Cora's concern about being able to develop a curriculum in this short timeframe for next year. And besides that, I, I guess I'm just partial to sixth grade being in elementary because I feel like they are on the cusp of, of a big change and keeping them in that sixth grade elementary environment just feels a little more safe. But yeah, I guess that's really all.
Thank you.
Okay, did I see? I thought I saw another hand go up, but maybe I missed it. Let's see one now. But if the, there is, oh, there we go. Well, let me just see, is the person, there is someone attended via who hasn't not participated yet, who's attending via telephone, if that person would like to speak, they can unmute themselves and speak. And if not, we'll, we'll go to another person. Not seeing an unmuting, so we can go back to Cora.
Sorry to ask again, but since there's not any questions, I just want to reiterate, my first part of the question was that why is it rushed for next year? Like, can this be part of, you know, like, once the new building is there, but not now? Or is there a rationale behind that, that it had to have, it has to happen next year if we wanted, you know, for the new building project to be approved?
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so I think that'll be something the committee talks about is timeline. I think nowhere in my slides did, I think I indicate a have to timeline. I think there's some current and continuing space needs at the elementary level that probably, in my opinion, would push, I would encourage the committee to not thinking about four or five years down the road, because those space issues aren't going to go away. And particularly at Fort River, they're going to, I think, get, continue to be challenging. But at the same time, I think if there's feedback on the timeline for the committee, I won't speak for the committee, if there's time back for the, there's feedback on the timeline for me, I, I, I'm really open to hearing that. And I'm pretty sure the committee would, but I just try to be careful not to speak directly for the committee.
I think that summarizes it. Well, I think the decision that's in front of the, the school committee is, is whether to move the sixth grade to the middle school as well as the timing for that. So part of the proposal is to have it for 2022, given the space constraints. But that absolutely is part of our decision process that's in front of us. So please share your thoughts on that. I see David Kaiser has his hand raised. I think you're still muted.
Thank you. I apologize if I missed this earlier, but I didn't know if you could just speak to the role of Pelham in this decision as well and whether or not Pelham would then be included with the move to the sixth or eighth. Thanks.
I'm probably the only person who can speak to that because I'm the only person who works directly with Pelham. And that'll be on the Pelham School Committee Agenda, which I think I was, I think their first meeting is September 15. But what I would suggest is, I mentioned three parts in my presentation of why we're talking about this. One is educational model. The second is about acute space issue in the Amherst Elementary Schools. And the third is an MSBA building project. And points two and three don't relate to the Pelham Elementary School experience. So I think it is a really different conversation for Pelham. And I think even the school committee conversations that have went on so far have felt very different to me because I sit on both, you know, I don't sit on the boards, but I work with both the Amherst School Committee and the Pelham School Committee. So I think it's March, excuse me, September 15th, I think that's a Wednesday night. That'll be on the Pelham School Committee Agenda. I think my own personal opinion is, I think the question feels very, very different to me in Pelham. And I think there is more urgency because of point two and point three, the space needs in the elementary schools in Amherst and the MSBA project to make a decision on a pretty quick timetable than there is in Pelham. I don't see the Pelham having the same urgency to make a decision.
Thanks. I guess just one follow up question that I would have is just how that would impact academically the students that then follow in through seventh and eighth and the programs that they would be, you know, potentially in or not. I think I mentioned, I was kind of hearing in the background, but I wasn't quite sure whether or not that affects like language programs or any kind of language programs or any other things along those lines that then would impact the Pelham students and how they're transitioned, transitioned into the seventh and eighth grade classes. So one thing that would be great just to hear from you all at some point or just to consider that.
Yeah. Thank you. And I think just, I won't directly speak to that, but I think if that question comes up through public comment or just a reminder, virtual kick to me to talk about it either at the regional level, where that has a large implication, or at the Pelham Elementary Level. Unfortunately, this body really can't, because of open meeting law, get into how it would influence students that aren't in its purview because this, this, this body is just for the Amherst Elementary School students. It's a great question. So I don't, I wanted to honor the question, but this is, I, it's not the form for me to address that particular piece.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Other comments or questions from community members?
So one thing I didn't mention, now that I have it, this is great because it gives me a chance to reflect and we're not on to the next agenda item, is one of the other reasons for asking for this Amherst School Committee make a vote on the sixth grade question is that, and it dovetails to another topic on our agenda, but I think this is appropriate, is it will be the fork in the road on the building project, one way or the other, separate from the question that Cora and others have raised about timeline. This will determine what the building project is. And so it's going to be really helpful for a decision we made one way or the other, so that when a designer and architects hired in the next couple of months, they have a more clear pathway onto the direction that community is going in. And in this case, grade configuration is, is a school committee decision, not a building committee decision, but it's going to define the, the building committee's work. So that timeline is really important from my perspective, not just on a practical level, if we are talking about fall of 2022, but it actually directly affects the building project and a delay, a long delay in that decision will actually have a negative implication of the timeline for the building project, which I think everyone in the community collectively would like to see done yesterday, right? Quite literally, yesterday was the first day of school, but figuratively as soon as possible. And so it's just an important wrinkle. Someone might say, why is the superintendent asking the school committee to vote in October for something that the earliest one happened 10 months later, but the people think that's too slow or too fast? A different question. But, but there is an intersection between the building committee, the building project, and making sure that goes as quickly as possible for a positive result. I don't mean rushed, but we wanted, you know, not be inefficient for the sake of being inefficient, right? But to move forward, I think a good pace. Mr. Harrington and I are both on that committee. And so we, we sort of span both groups of the conversation around the building committee and then the conversation here as well. Sorry, I thought that might spur more questions or dialogue. I apologize, but it was a point I wanted to make anyway.
It might be helpful also to, to sort of, the complexities of our decision and governance process in our, in our districts plural is confusing if you're not deep into it like we are. And so just to sort of clarify, you know, explain a little bit more about what Dr. Morris was talking about. The region is the secondary schools that decisions in front of the Amherst School Committee pertains only to where we want our sixth graders to be educated, whether we want them in the elementary school or in, in the regional schools. The regional school committee, of which all five of us are members, and so therefore we have a quorum, and that's why we're not talking about the region. But separately, the regional school committee together will need to make a decision and about what But separately, the regional school committee together will need to make a decision and about whether to accept sixth graders into that school. And then, as Dr. Morris suggested in the timeline, part of the next steps is to have those discussions between the Amherst School Committee and the regional school committee about what that looks like and how that will be organized. Each other, each of the other schools that send their secondary students to the regional schools will independently make decisions related to their own sixth graders. So if any of our other community members or guests in this meeting would, would like to speak or ask a question, feel free to just unmute yourself. We don't have a long queue of raised hands, so, so feel free, and we'd love to hear from you. And if anybody's watching online and at home on TV and would like to speak live, the Google, the link to join and speak live is in the agenda, which is posted on the ARPS website. Mr. Dillon?
I mean, just a logistical point, you know, so we have it posted for 7:30 on the agenda for start. If, if nobody else wants to speak, we could move on with our agenda, and then if somebody happens to hop on the call before eight, we could always table our discussion of whatever item we're on and circle back to this. I mean, I'd be comfortable with that if other people are.
Dr. Morris?
This may be going too creative, but I wonder if actually we could transition to school building project as a next agenda item because that seems somewhat connected and probably easier to interrupt than a conversation on vaccine mandates, which might be a little more awkward to interrupt for public comment. If, I don't know how the committee feels about it, but I'm just trying to think of the flow of the meeting, and if people do come in, we want to honor that, but it might feel more natural to be talking about the building project and then have that conversation than vaccine mandate.
So the proposal on the table is to move on to item E on our agenda, which is the update on the school building project. And pending other members of the community that would like to speak, as long as they join us before by eight o'clock, and we will interrupt our, our conversation to enable them to speak. So I will look around to the school committee members that we are all okay, if you can give a thumbs up to that proposal. And I see a unanimous agreement to make that change. So let's move on to item E, the update on the school building project. So I will look to our members, building committee members, and Mr. Harrington and Dr. Morris for that update.
And would you like me to do the overview and, or would you like to, whichever you like?
Yeah, you can pick.
Okay, happy to do it. So the short story is that we got a number of interested folks. We actually had a tour of the outside and inside of the building. This was sometime in early August. And that was, we had a lot of interest in touring the building. Unfortunately, the folks who were posting the RFP RFQ, I always get those confused for advertising for architects made a technical error. And so with that technical error, it will slow us down a little bit, and, you know, we were hoping to be at MSBA and kind of the next five, six weeks, and so it's probably caused something like a five, six week delay, so we'll be back, you know, it won't be over to them in November because that's the law in terms of procurement. So it was an unfortunate mistake. We're hoping that a five or six week delay doesn't have long lasting implications of opening the building. I think, you know, time will tell. But, you know, we're working to recoup that. We probably won't get more applications than we've received for the first batch, but you never know, because that's why there's laws and rules around procurement. It's a good thing. So it was an unfortunate error by folks involved in procurement, but it's been fixed now, and we're on their calendar for, I think it's a early November date. But, you know, what I was heartened by is that there was a lot of interest in the project. There were, I don't remember the sign and sheet, but there was probably 25, 30 people from different firms from all over New England who were interested in learning about the building. Mr. Roy Clark, our facilities director, as well as our owner project manager, Ms. Shane, Chair of the Committee, walked them around the building. They asked a bunch of things I could answer about instructional educational models, a bunch of things I can't answer that Rupert was there for, for things like technical systems, what's original to the building, what's, what's, what's been done to the building over the, over its lifespan. They also did a tour of Wildwood afterwards, so people could see, even though they're, they're close to mirror images, right, they might have been that way in the early seventies, but there have been changes over the, over the years that make them slight, have slight differences. So that was a really, really, again, heartening to see the level of interest. The next building committee meeting, I believe, is on the 23rd of September. It's on the 23rd of September, I believe, at eight o'clock. At that point, I think the new posting and advertisement will be done, and we'll be able to start the process of looking at applications, which is where, you know, for me, having been through a part of this process before, it does get a bit more interesting because, you know, you're talking about people who are literally going to design the building, no disrespect to OPMs and other folks, and they can talk about buildings they've actually built that have kids in it, and, and that's, you know, always exciting for me as an educator to look at different styles and different choices that were made in other communities. So I want to go to Mr. Harrington, see if I'm missing anything.
Nope, that was a solid summary right there.
And I do see a hand raised, so maybe before we go back to any questions from the committee on the building project, let's invite Deb Rosenblum to unmute and speak. Ms. Rosenblum, if you would, if you, oh, there you are.
I'm sorry, it was, it was slow on muting. Thank you. I did just have one concern that I expressed in the, in my comments, but also just something as you're thinking about this moving forward is also, you know, the specialized programming, which has had significant staffing changes. And right now, at the elementary level, it's K through six, and then you have seven through eight in a very different type of program with a different focus. And then you have the high school with the Pathways to Independence Program with a very different type of focus. So if you're taking these sixth grade students and you're putting them into coming from the ILC program at the elementary school level into the ESP program at the middle school level, I think there needs to be some consideration of that, you know, in, in your decision-making, and because that, those, all three programs have had significant staff changes over the past during COVID. Well done. I mean, the programs have been amazing, but that's a huge concern because I know for one of my children, that transition from the ILC to ESP, the, the expectations are very different, and if that's going to be housed within the middle school, how is that going to work? So I just want to make sure that's also factored into the decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other raised hands, so we'll move back to the building project update. Are there any questions from committee members on the update provided? Mr. Dillon?
So one thing that I'm trying to think a little forward-thinking about in terms of schedule and, you know, trying to save as much time as we can, is the educational plan. So it's a big piece of the next phase. The school committee is heavily involved in it, and I'm wondering, Dr. Morris, have, have you or other members of the district already done some forward thinking or drafting of that, and is there maybe anything that we can reuse from the previous project? I know it's a little stale at this point, but, I mean, we still are fundamentally the same school district, so I'm hoping that perhaps there are some efforts there that could be reused so that we're not reinventing the whole wheel. But at, at the very least, you know, given the delay that you just spoke of, we could or should at least be ready to hit the ground running with that piece, so that, you know, the school committee is not introducing any additional delay. So I don't know if you could talk, talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. So the owner project manager met with Mr. Harrington, myself, and Ms. Shane, Chair Shane, and we, she had the similar opinion that you expressed, that she checked in with me, and, and that plan was, was co-authored by many, many teachers and community members. I think the vision of the district has moved forward with that, even though the building didn't come to, to pass in terms of more project-based learning, high engagement of students. And the, the reflection was that it was a really good document, in her opinion, right, and MSBA has already vetted it. And so there are sections that absolutely need to change. I mean, the technology section, you know, for instance, Mr. Champagne, you know, it was written in 2015 or something, so things have changed in six years as it relates to technology we use in schools. And the grade configuration obviously was a big part of that, and that would need to be completely redone. But we have been working on that. We did set some time this summer to work with, and Mr. Harrington, thank you for your contributions to that as well, to work on that so that if we are ready to go, whenever that happens in the fall or winter, that we can bring that to the school committee and the building committee without having perhaps to spend time to redo things that we actually are really proud of. It was cool looking back at it. I, it was a really good document. I was really, really pleased. I hadn't looked at it in many years, and I think because it's already been vetted by both the prior school committee, but also by the MSBA, who has to approve it in the end, I think it'll be a much more expeditious process this time around. So we've already did some work in July, I think it was in July, right? And on that, and I do think that'll be ready to go as you make a decision on grade configuration and updating that section for, you know, public feedback as well as feedback from, from you all. So I think we, you know, Ms. McDonald and I did talk about that and trying to think about when to slot that on the agenda, and perhaps with the delay of the hiring of the designer that may affect it again a couple of weeks, but our original plan was to have a conversation in the late fall, early winter on the educational plan at that point.
Any other questions on the building project from the committee? Not seeing any. So we have about five minutes left on our public forum. If there's any, any remaining questions or comments that folks that have joined us would like to make, please unmute yourself. While we're waiting, I have one question, and I would like to write it down. Dr. Morris or Mr. Harrington, when is the next building committee meeting?
It's September 23rd, which is a Thursday morning at eight o'clock. And it will be a virtual meeting. And there are public, there is a public comment block in, in every, all of the school building committee meetings.
So while we're waiting, I will also mention again, we will have a second public forum on this same topic on September 21st. We accept email public comment on this and other topics as well, as well as voice comments. So if you're not able to make it and attend live for, to be heard in that, on the 21st, you can still get your comments in and, and get your voice heard by either sending, leaving a voicemail at our call-in line or by emailing for public comment. As long as we receive that by 3:00 PM on the 21st, it will be included. And of course, the committee also welcomes any email at any time that may or may not, that is not necessarily specifically for public comment. And Dr. Morris, on the, on the survey tool that will be going out, who in the community will be receiving that? All elementary families?
And staff.
And staff. And that will be going out?
Next week.
Next week. We've just a couple of minutes left. If anyone would like to take this opportunity to speak?
I wonder, I'm sorry.
Dr. Morris?
While we're waiting, I don't know if there's warrants to approve. I'm guessing there's quite a few. Or whatnot, excuse me, not approved, but warrants to share. That might be another thing to, while we're waiting kind of thing.
I would be happy to jump ahead and do that. I have about 10. Let me, I lost my mouse. There we go. I'll dig these up. Actually, I have significantly more than 10. So I will start with the oldest and read until eight o'clock, and then we can come back to this, so you won't have to hear my voice for all of that. So I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables, the amount of $183,059.65 for a warrant dated June 18th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $121,720.22, grant fund expenses of $32,803.8, behavioral mental health funds of $9,197.42, miscellaneous funds of $987.42, Article 15 funds of $4,030, Article 14 funds of $9,466, and a gift of $675. And I signed that on July 12th, 2021. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature payables, the amount of $281,976.2 for a warrant dated June 28th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $236,890.26, grant fund expenses of $40,673.12, and other funds of $4,412.64. And I signed that on July 20th, 2021. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature payroll in the amount of $602,346.6 dated July 28th, 2021, and I signed that on August 3rd, 2021. And I will read one more. And I will read one more. I authorized by my signature payroll in the amount of $4,886 dated July 28th, 2021. And I signed that one also on August 3rd, 2021. I do not see any more raised hands. So with that, we will close our public forum for this evening. Um, and again, as a reminder, we will have a second, uh, public forum on this specific topic on September 21st. With that, we'll move on to, um, item B, um, which is discussion on a possible vaccine mandate for staff. Um, and I will turn that over to Dr. Morris for presentation.
Yeah. And so, uh, presentation is probably a stronger word, but I'll, I'll start with some introductory comments, which is, I think I shared with the committee that, uh, some media coverage that Governor Baker has supported vaccine mandates for staff. He's implemented it for staff at, uh, the state or state level. However, he is declining to implement it for educators as is being done in six or seven other states at a statewide level. And I'll hold my editorial comments for now. Um, but, um, I think we are seeing some districts have a vaccine mandate for educators. We're seeing in Somerville, uh, Lexington, Berkshire Hills are the three that come to mind. I know some other ones are exploring this. Um, and I think the general concept, um, since we're talking about elementary school is that elementary schools are not eligible, elementary school students are not eligible for the vaccine at the current time, or 98% of them, maybe just a couple of kids whose birthdays came up or whatever. And so, uh, I think what we know about vaccines is that they're, uh, they prevent folks from, um, they're, they're effective at preventing folks from getting COVID. It's not 100% effective, but they're a lot more effective than when you're not vaccinated. And they also prevent serious complications. And so, you know, as we are in this kind of Delta phase of the pandemic and a lot of concerns about that. And it does seem like it's going to be a little while longer till six to 11-year-olds are eligible for the vaccine under an emergency use authorization. The topics come up, uh, the vast majority of our staff are vaccinated, right? We have anecdotal information, uh, about that. Uh, but you know, we, I am getting significant levels of, I don't mean public comment, like, um, you all get public comment, but just emails and phone calls from families at the elementary level who are, are really concerned because their children can't be vaccinated, uh, and with a lot of concerns about staff, wanting to know more specific information than we can share about individual staff members and whether they're vaccinated, but also more generally about vaccination rates for, for teachers, uh, and paraeducators and staff who are in buildings. You know, Dr. Fauci has made explicit comments, uh, encouraging vaccine mandates. Uh, and I think noteworthy as well as the Massachusetts Teacher Association came out with a very, very strong statement in support of vaccine mandates, um, for staff and students. We can't talk about students tonight because we're talking about the elementary level. Um, so we're only talking about staff members who are eligible. So that's sort of the context of the conversation. Um, and I'll, uh, be happy to answer any, you know, clarifying questions or thoughts, but that's sort of the, sort of the background context and information I thought I'd share about vaccine mandates.
So this is a, um, a, a discussion this evening. Um, we will, um, in, at our, I believe we had it scheduled as a possible vote of the next one. But if we, but we can also, um, discuss that, you know, include that as part of our discussion, but, um, I will open it up for comments. Ms. Spitzer.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad this topic's on the agenda. I'm, you know, I believe it's important. Um, vaccines are a very important way of protecting students, staff, I mean, folks who, who don't have the option of getting the vaccine, whether it's because of their age or because of their health conditions or what other, other reasons people may not be able to, um, obtain a vaccine. And right now vaccines are so widely eligible, I mean widely available, but I, I, I can't really see a good reason, um, not to move forward with this. I, I, I have just a couple of questions kind of about the logistics of this. One, you know, I, I did look up some of the places that you mentioned that had, um, these mandates, and it seemed like some of them that the town had made the mandate. And I just want to clarify, I mean, as the people who work in our schools are district employees and not town employees? Or is the, is this something that we could partner with the Amherst Town Council on potentially mandating? Cause I, I just think, I'm frustrated that Governor Baker has failed to, um, make a statement, um, to, you know, more broadly and like moved across the board to mandate vaccines as we're seeing in a few other states. Personally, it's frustrating to me that this is being pushed onto the local community. Your, whether or not there's a mandate in place depends on, um, your local, um, government. But I was curious if, um, at least on the local level, if this is something, if there's, if anybody's aware of what's going on at the town council level, and if this is something that sits with them or, um, with another body, like the Department of Amherst Public Health. Um, and then I was thinking at the, do we need to coordinate with the region as well as we, as we do this? And then final comment is I would just love to see this happen sooner rather than later. So if it requires us meeting for a short meeting between now and our next meeting, I, I'd be in favor of that just to, because it's going to take a while for vaccine, you know, if somebody's not vaccinated now, it's going to be eight weeks at least. I guess, I guess J and J is an option, but it will be eight weeks for the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine to reach full effectiveness. Sorry, that was around there.
Just two quick comments. One thing I forgot to mention is, um, you know, a couple of weeks ago, the Pfizer vaccine, um, the emergency use authorization went away. So there, there is, it is fully approved by the FDA, which I think is an important point where we're talking about mandates. To your question, I did let, um, the town manager of Amherst know that we're having this conversation tonight. Um, I'm not sure where the town council or the town is on this particular question. I think, um, why schools, I think that, you know, I mentioned at the elementary level in particular where students aren't eligible for the vaccine is a factor. I think the other thing is, um, schooling is compulsory. Right? So, um, you can choose whether you, yeah, I mean, I'll just leave it at that. School is compulsory. You know, students have to come to school, otherwise they homeschool, right, or other options. And so I do feel a sense of obligation for, for families and for our children that we do take this, this matter really seriously. We'll talk about it with health and safety and some of the kind of steps we're, we're planning to take in terms of unvaccinated staff, uh, for any reason, uh, and, and taking some strong steps around health and safety that way. And that'll continue even if there is a mandate, because there will be some folks from, who have health, you know, exemptions, legitimate health exemptions and, uh, perhaps other exemptions as well. So I don't know quite where the town is, other than I made the town manager aware of, uh, of the context and the discussion. But, you know, I think it does feel different when you, you know, there's compulsory attendance in school, which is primarily inside. Yes, we're doing more things outside, absolutely. But, um, you know, it, it's an indoor, uh, compulsory activity for multiple hours, five days a week. You know, that, that's where, from a health and safety perspective, um, I think we have to take it really seriously.
Um, and Ms. Lloyd, you have your hand raised?
Yes. Okay. So I wanted to weigh in really quickly, um, that I, in my position as a school committee member, sometimes what I think for the whole body might differ or have a divergent opinion than what I believe personally in my personal life. And this moment is where I come to that sort of, what I believe strongly for me and my family might be different than what I'm, the space I'm creating for the constituents that are really vaccine hesitant or, um, vaccine fearful. And I understand a lot of the historic reasons and or present reasons. So I don't know if before we make this mandate or when we make this mandate, if there could be, I've seen other school systems do an option if you're not vaccinated, whether it's for your religious exemption that you can agree to either get tested. One of my kids' schools is testing them twice a week. One is testing them once a week. So I don't know if we can, um, think about making space for certain people that will either qualify for the religious exemption or really feel strongly they need to take the vaccine exemption through, um, a thorough testing. I know that costs us more money, but I'm still sort of wrestling with, um, rights and liberties and safety and all of that. Sorry. I don't know if this was the place to state that, but I just felt like I wanted to let it be known. Thanks.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I really appreciate you sharing that because I don't think it's a simple, you know, cut and dry issue that way, you know? I will say in terms of the testing protocols the state is supporting us with, there's not an individual testing module, right? There's binex testing, which is typically for symptomatic individuals or close contacts. Uh, and then there's the pool testing. I also struggle, um, we're talking about one day a week, so that's 14% of the days of a week. And we know about this illness that at the time it would, right, it, it can happen, especially with Delta, right? The contagion is, is, is quicker. We'll talk about that when we talk about, you know, the masking and face covering rules that we're going to start implementing very soon. You know, at the elementary level, uh, and that's not to dismiss your point at all, Hala. It's just to, to sort of acknowledge that there's real tension here. And one thing that I wanted to share, um, something we're thinking a lot about actually is for vaccine hesitant folks, giving them an opportunity. We have this wonderful team of local physicians that, and I've not asked them explicitly about this, but you know, Ms. Spitzer was on a call with them with, I think last month or the beginning of this month perhaps. Um, and they want to help and perhaps giving people an opportunity to have, um, a private consultation, you know, perhaps in a group format with, 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 with folks who are experts in the field, who understand the historical reasons why there's vaccine hesitancy. Um, because I think that counseling piece is really important, and I think it, it perhaps softens the mandate a little bit, if that's where the committee goes, to allow for some supportive, uh, opportunities for question and answer. And then we had them in talking about vaccines. It was a public session. That's going to limit some people's comfort level at expressing questions. So, you know, I don't have, it's not a fully formed concept, but I think I just want to acknowledge your point as being very real and something that I'm doing a, a, a lot of thinking about is, uh, how do we help people along? Maybe at the end of the day, there does have to be a mandate, right? That'll be your decision, but, um, it feels a little better if we say there's a mandate and there's this opportunity to ask questions versus kind of like, it's just a mandate. So that may not satisfy, you know, your concerns, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to, you know, say that it will, but I, I think it's a really important point about the historical reasons why there is hesitancy among many different people for many different reasons.
I, I guess I, um, sort of building on that, I have a question, I guess, two question. We don't yet have the complete data, but will we have data about the numbers of, or proportion of our staff, um, and educators that are vaccinated? Um, and, and then separately, do we have any other similar such requirement for other vaccine protocols? You know, like measles or, or anything first that are a requirement of our staff? Um, or would this be sort of a unique situation?
So, um, we have anecdotal data. I feel really confident in saying that over 80%, you know, I've, I've, you know, I got some, some information that's not official that said it was quite a bit more than that. But, but I think, um, when we do send out the survey tomorrow, uh, about, uh, requirements for K-95s and where people eat, that'll probably be a, we'll get a more rich set of data from that. It's not that anyone who's vaccinated has to do it. It's just then they have certain requirements that they have to follow, which, um, I think will perhaps promote people, uh, letting us know if they're vaccinated. So right now we have a lot of anecdotal data, um, or surveys that we didn't design. But, uh, some information has been shared with us at a broad level. So, um, it's, it's hard to know, but the anecdotal, anecdotal data is, is, you know, quite high in terms of the vaccination rate of staff. Oh, there was a second point about, um, have we done this before? Um, I think, you know, the date of hire, you do have to, I think there is some element, but not, um, in terms of, like, we haven't had this for the flu vaccine, for instance, where we, you know, we did clinics, but not where there was a, an accountability part that had consequences on the tail end. So it is unique, um, then that way.
Thank you. Mr. Denning.
Yeah. So, um, in summary, this is something that I strongly support us moving forward on. Like Ms. Fitcher said, I, I think if we need to do additional meetings to move the process along, um, that here in our other committee, that would be something I would, I would be into. Um, I really support the MTAs. I'm sorry. I really appreciate the MTA support and how upfront they have been and also, also the other national teacher unions. And, um, they, they point out the research indicates that educators already have high like rates of vaccination. So, um, you know, most of this vaccination port for teachers has already been done by teachers themselves. And that's, that's, that's an incredible, you know, thing to be very grateful for. You know, I, I, I don't have really any problem in having a very strong, uh, requirement for ARPS employees to be vaccinated because, um, I, I see this as very different than, than what a basic citizen's individual liberty is. I, I don't, I would not support, for example, a, a national requirement that every citizen get vaccinated for, for a number of different reasons, but, but that's because people have the right to exist in this country. There, there is no, federal or state or local right to be employed in, in the ARPS district. And I, I feel like our number one, uh, charge, our base level charge, you know, when somebody drops their kids off at our schools is to keep them, their kid, their kids safe. And, and vaccination is, is clearly the, you know, along with masking, the, the strongest layer of defense. And so I, I feel like, um, I feel like we should, uh, we should, we should do that. And I think, I think it will be, um, I think it will be a very productive effort to, to do, um, when we implement the details of it with our, with our, uh, with our employees. Um, I, I also feel pretty strongly that, uh, if, if we're going to do this, then we, um, should use some pretty strong language, uh, some pretty clear language about what will be needed if, if we do grant exemptions. So, you know, from what I understand, uh, the state, the state requires, um, that we offer a medical and a religious exemption. So that, that won't be a choice that we have, if, if I have my understanding of the laws correct. However, you know, we can require substantial verified authenticated documentation for, for both medical and religious exemptions. And, and I, and that's, that's important to me because if, if somebody does have a medical condition, we, we absolutely, we should, we want to support that. That's, that's a top priority. You know, we don't want to, um, be requiring an employee to get a vaccine if, if they, if not medically appropriate. But by the same token, we don't want people abusing that exemption. Right? And so, and so I think the documentation needs to be substantial, needs to be verified, needs to be authentic, and, and the same for, for religious. If, if honestly, I'm, I'm not aware of many religions where, where the tenants of their beliefs, um, say that their members can't be vaccinated. Um, I'm, I'm open to the possibility that, that, that there are, but I think the number of genuine religions that oppose vaccines is, is pretty low, which is distinct from somebody who feels religious and also wants an exemption or is, has concerns about the vaccine, right? So that's, and, and I wouldn't want to confuse those populations. Um, so I, I feel like, um, you know, uh, that it's, it's, it's appropriate to, to ask for documentation for religious exemptions as well, because I, I feel like if, if those exist, we want to really honor them. And, and we want to make sure that, that loophole isn't being, um, taken advantage of. Thanks.
Any other thoughts, I think, Mr. Harrington?
Yeah. So this is, this is like a tough one for me. So, so just point blank period. I have a tough, a tough time with, uh, just like a strict mandate in general, right? Like it's, it's tough for me to kind of, kind of deal with. I'm, I'm more of a free spirited thinker, that, that sort of thing. At the same time, this whole pandemic has probably changed a lot of what I think in the, in kind of those terms, like, I didn't think I'd be happy to put up signs about a mask mandate and, and these sorts of things, but, you know, pandemic is what it is. But I'm, I'm kind of, um, I don't know if I'm necessarily on both sides of the fence per se, but I see both sides of the, the situation in terms of like, I'm not sure I want to cross into a, into a territory where we're making people kind of document their religion or, or their, you know, their theological beliefs or anything like that. I also am not sure that, so I, so full disclosure, I have a 12-year-old who is vaccinated. I probably feel a lot differently with him going into the school. But when I think about like, I don't know, the, the kindergarten version of him, right? And the folks that he would be around, I, I think that probably, if I were that parent right now, I would feel very strongly about the mandate. So, so it's, it's, it's So, so it's, it's, it's tough. And like, my, my personal opinion is that I'd, I'd like to hear a lot more from parents in those situations. But I'm kind of sort of leaning towards the, the, it's the necessity because everything got strained, right? So this is kind of one way to rein that in. But yeah, I, I'm also a little bit wary about kind of, uh, infringing upon people's civil liberties in the midst of a pandemic, I guess.
Yeah, I think, um, it's, it's a, you, you, you bring up a really interesting point. And I think the thing that I, I, A, definitely want to hear from more parents and just the sort of the few conversations that I've had with parents of, students in our elementary schools is that there is a level of sort of trepidation and sort of not knowing, the level of vaccination within the schools and sort of thinking about what are all the things that we can do to protect our students who are not able to be vaccinated at the elementary, you know, under the, a myriad of 12. And is, is this one more thing that we can do to protect them? And 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 sort of thinking through that, I would want to know really what proportion of, of staff are we talking about, um, that have not yet gotten vaccinated? To understand sort of the scope of the impact, um, that this might have. And, you know, generally I lean towards doing whatever we can, um, as a, as a district to provide a safe environment for learning. As, as Dr. Morris said, our, our students are compelled to be in school. We're not offering an alternate avenue for them to engage with, with learning this year. So I, I do feel obliged to do whatever we can to, to protect them. So, but I, I also really appreciate the thought process that, that Ms. Lord has sort of introduced of sort of how do we make it so that we can support staff members who might be hesitant and do it in a way that doesn't feel sort of punitive, um, in, in sort of mandating that. So I think there's, there's lots for us to, to think about. I see your hand, Ms. Fitzer. I, I also want to note that anything like this would be a policy, um, would, would require a policy. So, um, it, it, it's not something that we can do sort of super, super quickly. You know, like next week, for example, is, is probably not something that we can sort of vote and implement a, a policy that quickly. Just, and, and it probably would involve coordination with other, other committees as well. And Ms. Fitzer.
I think I just wanted to emphasize as the, you know, this shouldn't be personal, but I think there, it's going to be a long time before vaccines are available for the preschool age kids as well. I know that they're not necessarily, um, I, I'm not sure how the preschool, I think the preschool teachers are technically part of this as well. So we're talking about, you know, the vaccines are going to be available for probably five to 11, maybe if we're lucky by the end of 2021. But like, we, we also have preschool kids in our building and they probably aren't going to get the vaccine for much longer. And then also just emphasize, you know, I, I've heard from parents who are, you know, concerned because they personally are immunocompromised. And I think what we're seeing with though, though some of the waning effectiveness of the vaccine for those immunocompromised folks is that they're having a lot of anxiety about the change that has happened. I think if we had been talking back in April or June, or, you know, that one month period where our numbers were really low and we were talking, well, we've got an 80% coverage rate in our community, you know, in our schools. I'd be feeling very different as a parent of three kids who, who can't be vaccinated about my comfort with bringing them into the schools and not knowing the vaccination status of the people they encounter, because our kids are encountering so many staff throughout the day. My, my son's in a classroom right now with four staff people. And then on top of that, he's coming in contact with a bus driver. He's coming in contact with, you know, potentially other, um, his music teacher, you know? If you see 10 people and we have a 90% coverage rate, then you're going to see one person who is not vaccinated. So I guess that, you know, I, I'm wanting, I, I was, I was a card carrying member of Cornell Civil Liberties Union. You know, I, I strongly believe in civil liberties, but I think that because this is, um, a piece of, um, keeping our community safe and keeping our schools open and keeping our kids out of quarantine, you know, and getting as many school days as possible for our children. I just, I feel very strongly, and I'm also speaking as somebody who's employed by an employer who is mandating a vaccine. And, you know, we're seeing this at UMass, we're seeing this, um, throughout, um, the country and our community. So, um, I understand it's going to take time, um, but I just wanted to, you know, I, I feel very strongly about this and wanted to make that case again. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Morris.
Yeah, I just, uh, I want to respond to Mr. Harrington's point about hearing from more folks. I, I just think, um, again, to be, um, transparent, you know, this would, something in terms of the impact of it would need, uh, to go through, you know, some degree of bargaining. So, um, I, I were, I'm not saying you said this, but my mind went, oh, yeah, we could do a survey. But I think, you know, we, we typically don't survey folks who are not staff on something that would end up being part of bargaining. So I think I like a call to say, hey, if you have thoughts about this on the agenda, that seems very appropriate. But, but my mind, you didn't say it, my mind went, oh, yeah, we could maybe, but then, you know, I think, I think that's a, it's a complicated set of circumstances. When there, there would be bargaining with, um, one, two, three, four, five different, um, units, um, or six, excuse me, six different, um, units that we would need to bargain with, uh, potentially. So it's not the decision can't be made, it's, it'd be impact bargaining, wouldn't be bargaining the whole thing. It's not like typical bargaining, um, but I just, um, wanted to answer my own question out loud, um, about, you know, whether, you know, we go forward with it. I think, I think it'd be, it'd have some complicated dimensions.
And so I'm, I'm hearing a couple of things that, that sort of sense of sort of wanting to come back to this and come back to it sooner rather than later. Another committee is meeting next week, so it's a possibility that we can make that portion of the agenda a joint topic so that we can continue to have that conversation if that, um, is something, I can check in with that chair to, to, to get that going. But, um, I'm, I'm seeing nodding heads. Does that work for the committee? Okay, great. And moving on, um, next up we have the update on COVID health and safety, which is a nice segue from this conversation. There was a, a series of, uh, I guess it was one large document in our, in our packets that was, um, the letter that went home to families prior to the opening of school with the, uh, health and safety guidance, um, for this school year.
Yeah, so, um, I think I'll just hit some high points on that, talk about a new aspect that was added to the packet yesterday, um, under procedure for face coverings for unvaccinated staff. And then, um, the state came out with a, a pretty handy kind of flow chart that I want to talk through about, uh, when positive cases happen. So those are the three things. So one is, um, for physical distancing, um, at the elementary level, we are able to keep students, uh, three feet apart. All students are in desks in their core classrooms. That's a change for, uh, particularly for primary grade students. I've gotten some pushback from staff who, who understandably enough, uh, see the benefits of some table arrangements. But at this point, um, I think, uh, we're always thinking, what would we say five years from now? And I think if in 2026, we would say, of course you'd be in tables three feet distance. It's really hard to keep this, keep elementary students distant, even if you set them up that way. If you're in a table, uh, arrangement, you know, naturally like magnets, they won't be at three feet, uh, for very long. And when it's possible to be at over three feet, we've been able to do that. We also, um, encouraging outdoor education, um, as much as possible. When I've been at the schools, uh, many, many classes are eating outsides, uh, outside of the school. The current guidance outdoors, no physical distance will be maintained, and I included, but common sense will be used regarding mass gatherings without spacing, right? So we're not trying to recreate Wembley Stadium with 65,000, you know, screaming fans right next to each other, right? That was not a good outdoor event, right? We found that out this summer. But at the same time, when kids are at recess and moving around, uh, the current, we following, we are following the current guidance on that. Terms of testing, we've applied for, uh, and received big boxes, uh, yesterday afternoon. The binex rapid tests we used last year, uh, as well as for the routine, what's called routine testing, which is the new phrasing for pool testing. The state is not yet up to speed on getting those, their systems up and ready. They went with one vendor statewide, uh, both Robin Supranat, the nurse and lead nurse, and I have a conference call tomorrow afternoon with the state. So, um, there's a little bit of frustration that things weren't ready to go. Applications weren't due till August 20th. We got ours in a full week early on August 13th. But with applications due August 20th by districts, it seemed hard to imagine that, like many districts, starting like us on August 30th, that they would have the whole state up and running 10 days later. So, uh, Robin and Mary at the high school are working as, as fast as possible to get everything set up. But it's a state database with the state system. It's not something we do independent, like every time you use a binex test, have a student assigned to it. The result, you know, assigned to it on a state database, it's not something we can do sort of casually. You know, there's, there's rules and protocols with it. So, um, we'll find out more on the timeline of getting everything up and running tomorrow afternoon on our conference call. But that's where we are right now, but we are intending to, you know, send out consents when we get them, uh, to all families for both the binex rapid testing. Actually, it's one consent for the rapid tests as well as for the routine or pool testing. So, uh, we're doing everything as fast as we can, but, um, it's not our system, it's the state system, and, um, we're not quite there yet. For field trips, outdoor field trips, fine, indoor field trips will be avoided, um, and require my approval, um, which generally, I won't get many requests, I think. So, uh, but in terms of like field trips, like I know some of the classes are thinking of going to Kendrick Park. You know, places like that, you can walk over from Wildwood, you know, those type of field trips, um, certainly mimic what we would be doing if we were at the school setting or, or, you know, certainly more than encouraged. Face coverings, I think we've been through this, but you know, there's a universal mask mandate indoors regardless of vaccination status. They have to cover the mouth and nose. We have plenty of supply from last year of all sorts of face coverings for students and staff members. I think one thing to note is indoor sports, which in this case right now, which is volleyball, does have a indoor face covering, policy, and that's, uh, thankfully the MIA made that a statewide policy. We were really concerned that it was going to be district by district and, and that was going to be really awkward. It is worth noting that the state says on October 1st, districts can change their masking policy if 80% of people are vaccinated by just telling you they are, no proof needed. At this point, um, that's not the guidance I'm receiving from local, local public health authorities. So, uh, if there's going to be a change in face covering policy, it's something that, you know, we'll talk about here and in the public and people will have noticed. But, um, people should not, I've gotten a little bit of concerns of, oh, October 1st is going to come, it's only a month away. And, uh, for me, October 1st is just, you know, another day that heads us to fall and leaves changing. It's not going to affect our mask policy. I wish it would, I wish magically we wouldn't be having the cases we are in Massachusetts, but I do not anticipate a change on October 1st here in Amherst. Transportation, students and staff wear masks at all times and the bus windows are open except in like the weather we might get on Thursday, but, you know, tropical storm conditions. But otherwise, dress your kids warm, windows are going to be open even the dead of winter. It's really just precipitation that we have to watch out for in terms of having open windows. Visitors inside of buildings at this time, we are limiting, uh, visitors. Really three exceptions are one, uh, for families who don't have access and need to attend meetings like IEP meetings, families without internet access. We would have those meetings in a socially distanced manner, uh, within our buildings. The second is, uh, events that can't be replicated and distancing is possible. So kindergarten orientation, for instance, uh, you know, is happening, happened today and tomorrow. Small groups, three or four families, uh, and a kid, you know, less, less humans that would be in a room typically are able to stay distant. So where we are doing kindergarten orientations in person. And the last one is contractors who need to do their work. So the electrician we bring in to solve a problem needs to be able to be in the building. The mail needs to be delivered, those things. Otherwise, we are, that, that's pretty much it for our visitor policy. Hopefully over time we can relax that as the situation, not gunwood improves, but we want to be overly cautious as opposed to, um, feeling like we're pushing the envelope on that. Uh, we are allowing student teachers who are pre-practum or practicum students, um, to be part, um, of our school. We treat them as we do with staff, but we're limiting people who come in for like an hour or two for they need, you know, an observation of classes. We're not having those folks come in the building. Let's go to nurses, all of our school buildings have nurse and all of our three elementary schools have a certified nurse's assistant or CNA, uh, in a designated medically, medical waiting room. I want to note, I'm going through these kind of quickly because, um, they've already been sent out. A lot of these, um, they're all meeting or exceeding, um, the most conservative guidance we get, you know, which are, you know, is at the state level. The guidance is no distancing is needed, right? And, and we're, we're, we're continuing to use the most conservative guidance we have. And it's not just because we want to be conservative, we think it's the right thing, although those things are both true. It's we want school to be open all year long. We want to minimize the number of close contacts. We want to lim, limit, uh, either whether it's quarantine or test and stay, which I'll talk about in a little bit. We want to limit that. And so these precautions are all set up to limit the spread of COVID, to limit the opportunities that students wouldn't have to be in person with their, with their teachers and adults in their building. So I know it feels conservative and I've gotten some feedback on that. And I still think in my opinion, it's the right thing to do. Uh, last one is positive case scenarios. So, um, we use our, you know, using the Department of Public Health, uh, in Massachusetts, positive case scenario, which, um, really involves, um, the amount of times anyone would need to be, uh, potentially quarantined if they're positive. That depends on a couple of factors, um, and, you know, positive tests or negative tests after a certain number of days. And that's considered some of public health guidance. I think the most particular, the thing I wanted to mention is the, um, test and stay option, which is, um, has the support of the Amherst Health Department as well as our lead nurse, which is, um, if there are close contacts that, um, students or adults, um, can get tested five days in a row with binex testing. And, um, if they continue to see, receive negative results, uh, they can remain in schools. A program was started in Utah last year. And, uh, you know, I think, um, you know, in my conversations with the, the health department here and then beyond, because we are doing distancing, because we are taking the steps they are taking that are above and beyond with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, they were comfortable with this option. If we went with an option where there was no distancing in schools, I think our health department would have, um, perhaps had a different opinion of it. But it's part and parcel of why we're being conservative. So we can implement things like test and stay, uh, and reduce the level of quarantine that may be needed. You know, I, I say all that, and I also want to note that, um, there is no COVID free space, public space that I know of right now in the United States, right? And so, uh, I can't, I want to be honest that I can't pretend that there's not going to be COVID in our schools, that there's not going to be positive tests. We are going to have a reporting dashboard, we'll put it, I think we'll be ready on Friday, um, so that it, you know, we'll keep it on our website. So people can track of positive cases throughout the year, um, by school, by date. And for people who want to follow that, there is not the same guidance to share, um, positive cases other than close contacts. But, you know, for us, we want to be really open about, you know, what's happening in our school and if there's positive cases and people want to track the data, they don't have to search back to find letters. So we are going to be public about our reporting of positive cases within our schools. Last thing I have for this topic is, um, something that we are sending out to staff tomorrow at the elementary level, which is a procedure on face coverings for unvaccinated staff. I want to be really clear, and I think it's important to say, given our last conversation as well, there's no personal animus or professional animus that I have to folks who are unvaccinated. This is just about health and safety. But what we know about folks who are unvaccinated for any number of reasons or any reason is that they're more likely to contract COVID and they're more likely to have significant symptoms. And if they're more likely to contract it, they're more likely to spread it. It's not that vaccinated folks can't spread it, but it's significantly more likely that unvaccinated folks will. And so starting, uh, Thursday, uh, we're going to require that unvaccinated staff members wear KN95s or K, or KF, should say KF94s. Caught the typo tonight, uh, live on public TV, which is not necessarily where you want to see your typo, but that's where we are. But beyond a surgical level mask, uh, while they're working in school and have a greater distance when they're eating lunch. And, and, and I feel really bad about the lunch piece because, um, that social time is really important for everyone, not just kids, but for adults. People can have that outside if they're unvaccinated, but for inside, you know, where we are requesting 10 feet of space, which means that they wouldn't be sitting with another person at the same table. Or they can eat alone in a classroom or wherever they want to be. You know, I think there's been enough documented cases of spread happening in break rooms and, and that scenario, uh, in general. And even our, that's why we want to have a staff lunchrooms. I mentioned it earlier on a different, a lot of intersections between topics tonight. But we wanted to make sure that we're having staff, if they are choosing to eat lunch, that they're doing a distance way and a well ventilated space. And we've guaranteed that in all of our schools. But it is different for unvaccinated staff members. There's more risk, there's more for themselves and, and equally importantly, there's more risk for their colleagues and then the, the children that their colleagues teach. So I haven't seen this, uh, done elsewhere, but I did vet it with the Amherst Health Director as well as Robin, and they were both highly supportive of this. And, you know, the vaccine mandate conversation, right, will continue. And as Ms. Fitzer noted, even if it was decided tonight, it'd be seven, eight weeks or at least three or four, right? Or, you know, or most, you know, if you got J and J, till people are vaccinated and there will be people with exemptions. There's people with legitimate medical exemptions, um, and this is not. And this is not a punishment. This is not a. Trying to point out those folks and, you know, originally we actually weighed whether to have an option of a KN95 or KF94 or double masking, but. The honest truth is we're seeing a lot of people in our schools, a lot of staff members where KN95s or KF94s, we're seeing very few people double masked. And, you know, I don't want this to be a public thing. We're going to protect this data, you know, it's not accessible to the members of the public who's vaccinated, who is not. And wearing one of these masks at our elementary schools right now and, you know, even Allison, you know, and. Hala and Ben saw this even outdoors at convocation. There's a lot of people wearing this style mask, so it's not a. Scarlet letter or, you know, something like that. Frankly, it'll blend right in because there's a pretty high percentage of staff wearing it, but. We, we, in my opinion, we do need to do this. The California case from the CDC was sort of like the. Icing on the cake for needing to take a more proactive measure. And so, you know, because of the policy passed on face coverings, it doesn't require a school committee vote, but I'm certainly open to. Feedback or divergent opinion or support, whatever you choose. On on something like this or any of the other health and safety measures, but that's a little new. So it wasn't a public packet. It was something that we were. Transparent about on the front end. It wasn't in on Friday because we were still drafting it and getting feedback from our, our Health Department, but. It is a measure that probably is a long term measure. You know, it's not something that even if there was a mandate where we're going to let go of because we know that a mandate won't get to 100% of folks. Sorry, that was a long spiel, but I think it's an important topic clearly. So I'll pause and see if there's questions.
Question, Mr. Harrington.
Yes, I'm in that weird place again here, right? So, well, I guess it depends on the answer to the question. So this is voluntary, right? Like. You would essentially do this without. Having to prove that you were or worked vaccinated.
So it is voluntary in some ways. It's it's a little. Let me just say what it is instead of what it's not. So we're asking people. To share their vaccination status with us if they would like to not have these conditions. In their workplace. So in other words, if you, if you're choosing to want to eat inside. Near another staff member and or wear a mask that's not a KN95 and a KF94. Then we're asking you to share your vaccination status. You can be vaccinated and say, hey, those conditions are fine. That's what I'm doing already. I don't want to share vaccination status, right? This doesn't mean that anyone in the district will be. It won't affect anyone's employment. Right? This is not a, it's not a mandate that, I mean, if someone disobeys it, then that's a typical personnel issue that we have, right? We, we have personnel issues. Now and then, but it's not that anyone would lose employment over it. It's just changing what we're asking for face coverings if you're not willing to share with us. Proof of your vaccination. Does that help clarify, Mr. Harrington?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that makes it feel a lot better, actually. And then ask the question I probably know the answer to just to have it on public record. Do we possibly have a lot of these KN95s that you speak of available to give out to our staff? Ready to go, perhaps?
We have, I think, five digits worth bordering on six digits. You know, we got that big donation last spring. I don't know if you remember, we bought a lot, but we got a major donation of these. Last spring. So in terms of supply, we are. In good shape. I will say that I've noticed that a lot of the staff members who are wearing this style mask. Are choosing to bring their own, and I think some of that's in part because they found styles that. Work for them. I know there's people who are devotees of the KF94s because they feel like it feels better. And or different colors where ours are pretty the standard. Mask color, I don't know, off white, maybe. So, you know, people don't have to buy their own. We have them, but what I've noticed is that people are often. Wanting to have their own and and that's certainly appropriate as well. This was shared in advance with the membership of the, not the membership, but the one member of the leadership of the APEA. Because this topic comes up a lot.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah. So first, thank you for getting the recording dashboard going up again. I think that's a really important. Thing for the, for the community, especially when, when we're struggling to get the state to. Report outbreaks in schools, which they're not committing to. And thank you to Representative Dome for, for pushing. Pushing the state on that. Desi and the state, man, on this pool testing is so frustratingly. True to form. I feel like I just have to spend five seconds on this soapbox of. Of what, what a dereliction of duty it has been on the part of. Our governor and our, and our state educational leaders. That this, this guidance is so late. And, and, and so incomplete and they've done this and you could, you could almost excuse it at the very beginning, you know, a year and a half ago. You can no longer excuse this of dropping stuff on like the week before. School starts. So there was, so one of the questions I want to ask, ask you, Dr. Morris is. Is about what, what kind of supports we can do for students. Who have to quarantine, either they are get infected or they're close contacts. And, you know, just, just less, less than a week ago. Right? Desi updates their FAQ in the middle of the night without any announcement. And and makes substantial changes to this, and I just am so. All done with, with the state. You know, making these press releases, Charlie Baker dropping it in reference to it at his podium and then. Leaving districts like ours and super, you know, superintendents to, to, to clean up after them. It's really. Really annoying. So anyway, off the soapbox. So for support for students who quarantine. I, I know this news is just very recent to you in terms of the guidance, but. You know, knowing that we, we're not going to have a fully remote school this year and we have time on learning requirements that the Desi. Restricts us on, you know, what, what can we do for, for kids? I know that I also want to point out this. I'm imagining this might be a different answer at the much younger grades and at the older grades in the region. So this is still elementary. Meeting here. So obviously I have to, you know, parse it, you know, in that framework, but. Basically the question.
Yeah. So that came out long after we'd already talked about this with our, with our staff members and. We were going on the guiding assumption that we, not guiding assumptions, the information that had been shared with us by Desi. So. There's not a great way to patch elementary kids in or really any kids, but elementary kids into. An ongoing lesson. We learned last year, even at the high school level, that hybrid. Education. Is suboptimal to say the least, and that's working with students who are 14 to 18 year olds, let alone elementary age kids. You know, so I do think more likely what we can do is, you know, provide what we do. We're similarly for six students with making sure work goes home and some direction and some, you know, if there's feedback or work that comes in that it gets, you know, graded. But I don't imagine, we don't have a system for. You know, piping kids into a Google Meet while a teacher is teaching. The whole class live. You know, I do think it's this very, very challenging for teachers to do that, and particularly when you think about the age level of elementary kids. The way we would want to teach elementary school. Let me say it more clearly. Good elementary school teaching doesn't allow for students to be zoom into the meeting. Like if, if that's a successful model. For students to learn online while since teaching, I really worry about. The instructional model because the nature of elementary school teaching is. Not that the teacher's up in the room doing a lecture. It's that, that students are engaging in collaborative work and the teacher's moving around the room. And checking in with students. So, you know, I, I think it's a flawed concept, frankly. And what my concern is, is that it would actually. Push teachers into more quote unquote traditional styles of teaching that we've intentionally moved away from for good reason. At the, at the elementary level in particular, if you look at that educational plan we talked about earlier from 2015. It was all about exactly doing what wouldn't work for students to occasionally pipe in. So, you know, for us, we want to do, you know. Support in terms of what work that's going on in the classroom. So that students can stay up to date, but I don't envision. Sort of a video in model at the elementary level. For this, it's also the case, you know, a little different than the secondary level. You do worry about privacy. To a certain extent, we want our kids, just one more piece is. We want our kids learning outside, right? So students aren't getting lessons outside. That's not conducive to students. Going in. So, you know, to contort ourselves to make this system work by reducing the quality of the instruction. For everyone, just doesn't seem like, I'm sorry, I'm sounding really harsh, but this is. My belief, right? It's, it's not. How I feel, and I think that's why the test and stay option is so important for elementary students that if they are. A close contact and continue to test, test negative, excuse me, that they have access. To coming in, coming into school and receiving the full experience as opposed to. Quarantining and receiving either suboptimal experience or, you know, the experience of a student who's out sick. But, you know, receiving that a couple of days before school started as a complete shock with no notice. Was a huge surprise to all superintendents. And. If you want to talk about soapbox, my techs loop with other superintendents, you would join right in. You join in very well, Mr. Demling.
Other questions?
Thank you for sharing this. A couple of questions, just sort of about the implementation of some of this. I'm thinking first, first one comment that has to go back to the, the mask. I, I'm, I support the policy. I also wanted to state that. I don't know if other folks have experienced this, but I'm seeing it's really hard to get kid sized masks right now. So I'm wondering if our district is doing something to make sure that if we have extra supplies, I know, you know, like we should keep some, but like. It was like trying to get tickets to a concert the other day when I was trying to buy the Enro mask or this like highly effective mask. They sold out in five minutes from when the restart and then trying to go to Old Navy locally, trying to get masks. They were sold out. Online sold out some of these ones. Anyway, so I'm just mentioning this, like, I think to the extent, I know we got backpacks for kids. I'm hoping that we're also. Making masks available to parents who may have less resources and are having, struggling to get these for their kids because. As a highly resourced person, I'm having trouble getting the ones that I need for my kids.
We are. That's the short answer is boxes in schools. We bought lots of supplies last year and. I'm with you on the, that New York Times article and the one other one was just, you know. Synthetic came out, those brands are like, you know. Probably getting kicked back to time. Well, I'm getting outside the cell of my point, but we have excess, we have, we have masks for pediatric sized masks.
Yeah. And I, and I do think there's some that the surgical ones might be more effective than some of the other ones that are available in our communities. That's great. The other thing I wanted to just clarify because I'm trying to understand, you know, I, I think we want to make it, we have this really good. Summary document that you shared with us, but I'm just thinking like if I'm a parent and my kid not through school, because this is happening, you know, I mean. I think we're talking about, you know, transmission of COVID within the school, but there's going to be a lot of transmission of COVID outside of the school too. So my kid gets COVID. I. Who do I call? Can we have, do we have like a cheat sheet for like, you just tested positive? Or a family member, your, you know, brother, sister just tested positive. Does this. Test and stay thing mean that like if one of my kids gets COVID, my other two kids can keep going into school as long as they're doing binax testing daily? I'm curious about that because it, it kind of makes sense for me. Like if I'm in a classroom and I'm masked and I, you know, I'm not. But if I'm that close of a contact, does that same test and stay protocol apply?
So it depends on a number of factors and that the call and, and parents have been wonderful about this in the spring as well as the call goes. Either, you know, usually goes straight to the nurse. Sometimes people route it to the principal who sends it to the nurse. And there are steps to nurse, the questions that they would ask. So. The home setting is not the same as being a close contact in a school setting. Because the level of exposure is greater. Some families have the ability to isolate. I'm just going over the range of factors because it's not a yes, no, it's a decision tree, right? Some families have the ability to isolate. One child from other children's at a different level than others, depending on a whole range of factor, the age of kids. Family, right? Dimensions. Some people can live at the grandparent, right? There's all these range of factors. And all that's spoken through, through the school nurse who kind of walks through that decision tree with them. Consults with the contract tracer at the town and makes a determination on that. So. You know, the more clean test and stay models are when it's exposure at the school site. When it's at the home site, the bar is much higher and it may not apply. In the same way, but it's again, the nurse asking a, a set of questions to understand that the local context in the home. Which, you know, it is going to be different for everybody, right? There's. But that, the nurse is the key figure in that who works, you know, and then Robin, who works with the, the contract tracer for the town of Amherst.
But the way I'm reading it now is that it, it seems like there are very few instances where we would have any close contacts technically by the definition in the state document. Within our schools. It's not on the buses. It's not if you're distance three feet apart. It's not like. Maybe for folks who for reasons can't wear a mask, it sounds like we might have close contacts, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible during lunches. We're trying to just, you know, distance as, as much as possible, but that's, that is one possibility. That's why we're trying to, you know, encourage outdoors as much as possible and. Those pieces, but you're right. We're trying to reduce the situation, number of situations where. Close contacts would exist, but you, you also think about, you know. Adults who work closely with students and. Right? One on one situations where they need to be closer than three feet. So, but in general. You're right, we are trying to reduce the number of close contacts, not just because of close contact, but also because we're trying to reduce spread, right? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to respond to that point.
No, I guess I'm just wondering because this is the baseline. Well, if. So it's very rare that we're actually going to be getting notifications out, like if there's a case in your class, because hopefully we'll have had all of these. Distancing and spacing requirements. I, I guess my only concern is last year, like this was what we did last year, I think till large extent, but this year the buses are really different with like. Fifty six kids on a bus potentially and no seating assignments and sitting two to a seat. So, but it seems like as long as the windows are open and the kids are masked. Then they're, they're not considered close contacts.
Right. The bus with the windows open is not considered close contacts. And I will say, having been at all the schools for either drop off or pickup. We're not seeing many buses that are full. We're still having a lot of drivers as people who are dropping off and picking up their kids at the elementary level could tell you because of the line of cars. That is still a significant percentage of our population. So I know on that bus list, it lists the total number of potential riders, but we're nowhere near that on. The bus routes that we have. Frankly, some of our bus routes are also less than 15 minutes long, but that's a different matter altogether.
Yeah, no. Great. So I guess the final thing would just be, I, I think it would be nice to have on the website like. Or some easy way of just gaining access to like, I have a positive test, like how do I. Proceed and, and give parents the guidance. Just like I call this number just because I'm just thinking in a very stressful time and I'm worried that we might be seeing. More given the Delta variant and the increased transversibility.
I think that's a great point and we can put that out on Friday. Thank you for that. It's a good suggestion.
Any other questions? Then move us along. Thank you for that. You answered my questions also, Dr. Morris, so I don't need to belabor them. We will move on now to. Actually, before we move on, I'm, I'm going to resurrect one of our policies that we routinely ignored last year. Which is, I'm going to make a motion that we extend our meeting beyond the two and a half hours. As per policy. Move by McDonald's, second by Demling. We'll take a roll call then. Mr. Demling. Mr. Harrington. Ms. Lord.
Lord, I.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, I.
And McDonald's, I. Thank you. So we will move on now to the next item, which is. A presentation and a discussion on stimulus fund. And the engagement plan that we had over the summer as well as the spending plan. And there was a spending plan or proposed spending plan in our packets.
So I'll do, maybe I'll do an overview of the process and Doug, I think maybe. Do you want to walk people through the document or are you more here for questions? Sorry, Doug and I didn't get a chance to coordinate this. Today, it's busy.
I'm mostly thinking I'd answer questions, but.
Okay, then I'll walk folks through it.
I think that given the interest of time, I think that we've had the packet since Friday, so I think that would be helpful if we focus on questions.
Sure. So I'll just do a very broad summary. Debbie O'Smurlin, who wrote up this introduction, did a great job. She reached out to a number of different groups. Engaged and got, she wrote a summary of the feedback with those different groups. So really good participation and. I know August is a hard time, but doing actually virtual meetings allowed for people, even if they were in different places to participate. So thanks Deb for organizing that. The good news is we do have a fair amount of funds, we believe, S or two still left. It's, we continue to get. Reimbursements for things from last year. So that number continues to sometimes be a moving target. But we did sort of from our perspective, want to commit to not overspending in year one. Because we know that we have a couple of years ahead in this. And also we want it to be a dynamic document. I know it's a PDF, but. We want good ideas to come from the continually from the community, from school committee members. I got an email tonight in one of my other districts of, from an administrator saying, you know, now that we're back, I've seen this need and. We want to be flexible so that we're not overspending and feel like there's no learning that can happen during the school year of what the needs are. But also doing the things that are going to be the right things for our students in our schools. So. One thing we are spending is we did hire additional staffing. Actually, it all. one thing we are spending is we did hire additional staffing, actually at all three of the elementary schools in the end to cover lunches, because we are not having the full lunches in the cafeterias. That, that involves more coverage. It also helps in the morning and the afternoons are, you know, full-time paraeducators to provide more support for pickup, drop off, and then during the day for more additional support for students. As I mentioned earlier, we do have certified nurse assistants and waiting rooms. I'm just going to pick some of the big ticket items. You know, we do a lot of health and safety stuff, like replacing the HEPA filter units. Some compensatory services was something that was advocated for by members from the CPAC session. You know, another one I want to point is preschool, the preschool coordinator really felt like a small amount of money to do more outreach is going to be really important because that early childhood status had such a different experience because of COVID. And as a percentage of their life, it's, it's a lot that they've been experienced a COVID world. So that's something that we want to support. And you could see on this chart, it says number of years and some of these are one year and some of these are, you know, we're anticipating being recurring costs. There's a pretty big expense, $150,000 for, you know, tables, benches and Doug's accumulating from principals who are coming up with exactly what they want and where they want them. We're going to be able to, we made some purchasing last year. We're going to continue that purchasing as we experience what it looks like to have a pretty close to full schools. And those needs are greater and we recognize in that even the first two days. So they're giving us what they want. And then Doug and Rupert will do some purchasing of that and get the materials there in short order. The librarians brought up a really good point in the staff session about books that just didn't come back. They did such fabulous outreach last year. We want to support them with that. So those funds will support librarians who lost books during the remote learning time and they were delivering them to buildings. We, we actually wanted Doreen Cunningham's really good ideas as mentors and counselors beyond our EEP, our employee assistance program. We know it's a really challenging time for staff members to teach while we're at this stage of the pandemic. So EEP is kind of time limited. You get it, but you know, it needs to lead to another referral and providing more resource and support for staff members who are struggling, I think was a great idea. One of the things that came up from the impact, which is formerly is the ELL parent group, was time for interpreters to spend beyond their official hours working with students to build relationships at the beginning of the year. So that's something we're able to support and that's something that we're putting into place for additional time for those folks to be working with their students. You could see there's a number of academic things primarily focused on early childhood literacy. That we put in some social emotional training for staff and a couple of staffing items. I think it's the last thing I'll note is we have reached out to, to the town of Bay, or they reached out to us about potential funds and fun use out of their funding. And the things we've requested are about the potential sixth grade to move to arms. I think I spoke about them earlier. An additional preschool intervention and testing, just given, you know, how the pandemic has affected very young students in our community. They're going to have some public sessions, public forums, I think next month. So it's hard on the 31st whether I get that right. And I believe in the month of September, they're going to have some public forums to gather feedback because they got a request from all the different departments of the town, but you know, we're working with them on that. And certainly if they're not able to fund some of those things, we'll, we'll dig more into, you know, S R three funds to be able to do that. I think it's also worth noting that thanks to good work of Representative Dom, we got a $50,000 earmark across the districts to work with the bright program. Not in the bright programs that are set up at the elementary, middle and high school level, but actually district wide to support students. They worked with us in our admin week. I know they attended some of the sessions for teachers PD last week before the school year started. So that's something active work that they're supporting, not the bright programs, but actually using their expertise to inform and make our entire schools have that intentional focus on social emotional learning. So you don't see it in the grant document because we were going to fund it that way. And then we were very fortunate to have that advocacy at the state level and have it funded a different way. So I just thought it was important, even though not technically a grant to include here. So I tried to do that in five minutes or less. I think I was successful and see if there's questions or comments from the committee. Oh, I should say, there's no vote required by the committee. This is a discussion feedback and it can be an ongoing or iterative structure where we come back and report on here's what we purchased, but here's some other thoughts. We intentionally don't want it to be a plan that's static. We want to be mobile because if we learned anything over the last 18 months, static plans don't work.
For sure. Questions? Mr. Demling?
So thank you for this thoughtful list. I, I, overall, I think it's, it's very good. I like the investments in the social emotional support for students. I really like the investments in, in outdoor resources. I like that a lot of this is reflective of the input, the major themes that we received as, as outlined. I, I do, I do like the approach you just described of, of making sure we're flexible on this list. You know, that being said, I would like to make sure that we are making sure we're keeping nice and clean track of this has been done. That takes this much out of what we plan to spend. This is how much we have left over as opposed to just, oh, we'll just take things on and off. So, you know, I, but I, I have no doubt that you, Dr. Slaughter will, will manage that in a nice, clean, organized way. So a very brief question then, and I extended a comment. So my, my brief question is if we went with this plan as presented, how much would be left over for the, the future years? Approximately. And, and then my extended comment is, is a, is a pitch to increase the line item for, for the outdoor. So I really like that we have 150,000 on there for outdoor resources. So you've listed tents and benches and seating and expert to train staff and curriculum materials. That's great. I, I would like to make a proposal that we increase that to about 200 so that we can take care of one specific thing, and that's the back playground at Crocker Farm. So for those of you don't know, on the back of Crocker Farm, there is a playground that is the primary playground for the kindergarten and first graders, but is very old. I'm not sure of the exact age. I, I believe it's at least 25 years old. I believe some of the pieces, I could be wrong in this, are original to, to the building. There are a number of broken and cracked items, rudimentary. I, I mean, we've done the best we can, very, very old weathered material, but some, you know, rudimentary fixes that are not holding severe rust. Equipment that is not sized appropriately for kindergarten and first. It's, it's not fenced. And so a lot of our preschool classes can't, can't use it for that reason. Obviously not accessible for ADA. And I think that with, with some, with about $50,000, and again, I'm not a facilities guy, so I would want to have this, this reality checked. We, we could overhaul the equipment. We could replace the equipment. Now, I, I think you'd probably have to not get into replacing the, the surface. I think just from my, my past experience with, with watching the other Crocker Farm playgrounds come together, that, that really jacked up the cost. But if, if, if all we did was, was replace those pieces and make them appropriate for kindergarten and first grade, I think that would be really in line with, with what we've heard from the, the themes of, of the input here. I, I would, I would feel really good about it too, as a long-term investment, given that it's at Crocker Farm and we know that whatever happens with the building project, Crocker Farm is, is staying. And, and so this would encourage that use. And it's, it's a problem that, that, you know, Crocker Farm leadership has known about for a while and has wanted to fix. But you know, the, the, the funding stream just hasn't been available. And we know that CPA funds in town of Amherst are currently in high demand and will be in high demand. The Rotary grant that funded the, the front playground, you know, that was another one-off. So there are a lot of other options to take care of this and it's, you know, really competing with a lot of other priorities. So I, I would love for us to consider doing, doing that. Thanks.
I think that's something we can look into. I think it's a moving target because again, reimbursements continue to be variable, but I do think we'll have in Amherst, at least some fair amount of funds from S R two that we can apply to, to many of these items to, to leave more for future years. So I think when you're talking in the range, you're talking about it with the rationale, you're talking about it's something certainly we can explore. And I think we would, we would have the funds to be able to do that. In that scale, right? I, I'm not an expert on playground cost, but you know, if that, if that scale, you know, is up and I've been down, I mean, I've been to the back playground there and it is in poor condition and it's, it's probably the oldest of our playgrounds and, and sort of gets ignored a lot. And you know, as Crocker Farm has the preschool playground, it's just, the other playground that's lovely that was built when I was at Crocker Farm is great, but it, it does steer more towards the older students and having kind of kids spread out, especially during COVID and multiple sites just makes a whole lot of sense. So thank you for the idea. It's not something that came up or it thought about, but it's something we, something we can definitely explore and I think it's worth exploring.
Any other questions from committee?
Ms. Spitzer? I just wanted to say thank you for all the folks who turned out and gave the input. I, I think it's hard in the summer. I guess, I guess my only question is, as we move forward, what are the next steps, if any, in terms of public engagement? Or is this kind of like, we've, it just feels like, is there multi-year funds? Are we going to be doing this more than once? Or is this kind of some, I know you said it was a living document, but will there be additional forums or just what are the next steps, if any?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So we would plan to do this again. I think at this point, this is a pretty healthy list for us to execute. But certainly as it's multi-year document, we'd want to come back before the next year and be able to engage the community again, because who knows what the context is next summer, right? Hard, hard to predict a whole lot of variables, both COVID variables and non-COVID variables as well.
Yeah, I guess if there is going to be maybe just trying to schedule it so it's not happening in August. So just because our community is one that often kind of tunes out for, and I know it wasn't just in August, but if we could find a way to increase the public engagement, I think that'd be great. I think we did a great job this year too.
I'm not taking it. Yeah, no.
Just, just in terms of enhancing it.
Thank you. And the one question I had, and I, I shared this, I think earlier with you was just a question and I, this pertains more to Crocker Farm than to the other two schools, but if there's any opportunity to to fold in some, some items or projects off of our punch list from the ADA capital study, if there's any of those that we can sort of fold into this, particularly at Crocker Farm. That might could help us in, in achieving that and getting that done sort of in quicker order.
Yeah, that, that was a, it's a great suggestion. I think some would apply, some won't. But the ones that apply, I think you're right that it, it would, you know, we might be able to expedite when that would happen from a financial point of view to get that done.
Mr. Demline, did you have another question?
Yeah, real quick, a couple of items that I, I thought were interesting. But Dr. Morris, if you could talk a little bit about, about where the intersection with, with the S R funds and COVID related stuff comes in, is under administrative feedback. There was a request to review and update as needed early literacy and math curriculum for preschool and also conduct an ELA curricular review. These are both like, generally speaking, sound like great ideas. I just wondered what the, what was the context the administrators brought up in, when you were talking about, you know, what do we want to do at S R Farm in particular?
Yeah. So some of it has to be spent on quote unquote, learning loss. And I think for us, there was a lot of concerns, particularly around early literacy. It's just one of these skills that's really hard to teach online. It's not that people didn't try and do their best and do skilled work, but our data is showing us that, you know, we, we have reason, like many districts, to be concerned about early literacy and, you know, there, there's some belief that there is some degree of a window, right? Where students acquire some of those foundational literacy skills. And if they're not acquired at a certain time, it actually affects not just the literacy, but everything else, because the other content areas are sort of hinge on some degree of expected literacy skills. So, so some of that came from, can we use this as an opportunity to think about what we're doing more generally and not just focusing on that one particular item? And, and that's something that, you know, I think this year we've decided probably, you know, you could see in what we have in our plan that we're going to buy some materials and provide some support in terms of full curricular view. We're not committed to that for this particular year. But I think it's really hard to know how to plan some things like that because we don't know how this year is going to go, you know? And I think that, that's where it gets really complex for us. If the year's going smoothly in the winter, we may say, well, you know, we've done springtime reviews of other curriculum areas in, in some of our districts and and we can look at that. But the origin was really just thinking about opening our eyes to what we're seeing for literacy. And, and so we're doing, you know, some of the things to ameliorate that, but also looking at what are we doing more generally for how we approach literacy? And so it was a generative conversation and you know, we, we were intentional about being transparent and including things that we're not supporting in our first year plan on here, because we thought it was important to share the, the specific feedback from all the groups.
Any other questions on the plan? Yes, Tigny. And so one of the things that I'm hearing is a desire to check back in on a regular basis on sort of what's been accomplished, achieved, what's changed and what's new. And we'll make note of that when we get to our future agenda. We are now up to item F, which is a discussion on our meeting locations. We opted to begin remote, but we want to sort of open up the discussion about whether we want to have in-person meetings or remote meetings going forward. And I'm, I'm trying to remember, Dr. Morris, what the guidance was from the town council. My understanding is that continuing, they're going back to remote. And yep, go ahead.
Yeah, they're continuing to be remote at least for the next month and they'll reevaluate at that time. I think it is worth noting that their decision is not binding for you. In other words, the Amherst School Committee can make a different decision than the town made. Either way, you know, if they choose to, to go back, it really, you know, that was clarified with the town manager and myself last week, just but you know, that's what their current status is. They're, they're working, they're having the means remotely.
Thank you. And, and I, and I think also Mr. Mr. Demling had asked some good clarifying questions also in terms of in-person meeting locations that for our consideration. I think just to remind folks, because it's been a long time since we met in person. That just prior to, to the start of COVID, we had moved our location from the high school to the town room in the town hall. Where, for the Amherst School Committee, the other committees were meeting elsewhere, but the Amherst School Committee, we had moved to the town, town room. It believed that we're, that it's, public meetings are being encouraged to not happen in town, in town buildings. And so that, that is one thing for us to consider as well. Thoughts? Mr. Demline?
Yeah. So I strangely don't feel super strong one way or the other on this right now. Generally speaking, I, I do think we ought to be thinking about how do we get back to in-person meetings? I mean, instead of state, right? When, when a pandemic isn't preventing it, we ought, we ought to, we ought to be in person. We shouldn't be remote from. And so we, so we need to be thinking about what, what are those, those conditions? And I, I think for two reasons, you know, one, I think, and it's hard to remember now, but I, I think there are aspects of the effectiveness of a in-person meeting that we don't get while we're all remote on Zoom. I think, I think this committee in particular does exceptionally well, maxing out the quality and effectiveness of online meetings, but I think there is kind of a ceiling to it and in the very few opportunities I have had to have collaborative meetings, whether formal or informal, you know, worker or other organizations during this pandemic, they've been really eye-opening. It's, it just, it was just a reminder of how, how much that, that in-person human engagement, I don't know if it's just body language or psychological, whatever. But anyway, we need to get back there. So that's one, you know, but the two is we could, we should, I, I feel like we should only do it if we can, you know, competent, confidently guarantee to the public or say to the public that this is a safe space and we welcome you into the safe space. And based on the description that the town manager gave me, I don't think that I can confidently say that right now. So I asked him if, about the air exchange in, in the town room. And he, he said, generally speaking, he felt like town hall air exchange was good, but they, he didn't have a, a test value there. He also said that the windows don't open. So, uh, you know, so I, those two things alone give me pause. And, and then, you know, like you said, it is our decision, but he said that the, I'm just quoting here, we are discouraging the use of town buildings for public meetings at this time and all town boards and committees will continue to meet remotely through the end of September, at least. I asked a clarifying question about whether that was just like a administrative decision, whether that was coming from I asked a clarifying question about whether that was just like a administrative decision, whether that was coming from their health department. And I haven't, haven't gotten that answer yet. So all that together, you know, I do want to get back to in-person, but, but without knowing the details of that room and without really knowing what the current recommended guidance is of the town health department, I don't feel like I have the information to do that. That being said, I'm open to other people's feelings on the matter.
Other thoughts? Ms. Spitzer?
So my opinion on this has changed dramatically since we first, I think you saw some feedback on it. So I mean, there was a sweet spot where I think we were feeling pretty confident that numbers were low. I think right now I personally would feel more comfortable doing it remote. I think I strongly agree, we need to get back in person when it's safe to do so, but at this time, it just feels, it feels like we should be prioritizing keeping our community rates really low for our kids and so that kids can return to schools. And so I'm I'm the first person who I want to get out of my bed. I want to stop being interrupted by my kids and my pets during these meetings. So I'm fully, fully excited about being back in person. And I also miss seeing people. And I think there's something to be said for, you know, even the interaction we get to have with each other in the kind of the spaces in between meetings is really, really nice. And I miss that. But I think it's important to prioritize the health and safety of our community. So until it's safe to do so, I think we should meet remotely.
Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say I've like evolved greatly on this particular subject. There was, there was a point where I was super pro, we need to do this in person, but like, like Carrie or like Ms. Spitzer just said, the numbers looked way different at that point. So I, so I have that kind of like trepidation about, you know, risking public safety for these meetings based on like community engagement. I was wondering if we had any data or if anybody had kind of analyzed like how much, kind of anecdotally speaking, it feels like there's more like I hear from the community more now than when we were meeting in person. I also acknowledge the fact that I only met for what, two months before we shut everything down and went remote. So, so I'm probably not the best source for that, but yeah, like I definitely lean towards the virtual world. And I do like having, as far as, you know, public comments and all, I do like the fact that people can kind of gather their thoughts, get them out in writing and then send them to us. I feel like that's one of the few positives of this, but I also would like to get out of my bedroom at some point and interact with humans again. Well, with you humans again.
It's it's interesting because you'll recall that we changed our policy, probably, I don't know if it was a full year ago, at some point early on in our, in our remote meetings. That we actually changed our public comment policy permanently. It wasn't, it's not just a COVID era, remote era. So that sort of ability for the community to participate in our meetings through a variety of means will continue regardless of our meeting location. That's not to say that, that I'm advocating for it in person. I actually personally, I would go with whichever way the committee feels most strongly. And I probably have a slight lean to continue remote given. I think what weighs more on me is, is sort of the thought that the community, we, as much as we did desire to be together in person, ensure that even, you know, even though we've opened up all these other ways for the community to participate and be heard in our meetings, there's probably still a desire to face us in person at some point. And if we can't feel comfortable that the spaces that we have will enable anybody who chooses to do that, then, then I probably lean also towards, towards remote, but I honestly would go whichever way the committee would feel most comfortable. And Ms. Lord, I'm sorry, I didn't give you an opportunity to speak if you want to. So we did say we have a possible vote and I'm hearing that most of us are at least three of the five of us have voiced a preference. And I must like preference for, for remote. So do we want to move to a motion? Would somebody like to make the motion? Ms. Spitzer?
Can I ask a question first? Do we need to have a timeframe on this? Because I, do we want to set a time like we'll revisit it in December or, you know, when we reorganize? Or do we want to just say like open ended?
Yeah, great question. Dr. Morris, did you?
Yeah, and I, I'll go with whatever the committee says. I don't have strong feelings either way on this, the general topic. But I think on Ms. Spitzer's point, my recommendation would be leaving it open ended. Because again, I think building plans in that have a dead, like we'll reconsider it that even though that's what you're saying, I think it'll be perceived as oh, they're going to do this until this date. And you know, my sense is leaving it open ended makes a whole lot of sense. Yeah, I could go on, but I think that's my opinion.
So I move that the Amherst School Committee continued to meet remotely until further notice.
I'll second that. They're moved by Spitzer, second by McDonald, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Ms. Lord? Lord abstain. Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes four, four, zero and one extension. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, Dr. Morris, would, would you be willing at your next regular meeting with the town manager to bring up those questions about the the, the town room specifically, so like the A C H and the windows and also what the health department, if, if this recommendation to meet remotely is coming from the health department, I think those are a few data points that would help me think about timing of, of a return, in person return.
Yeah. So the quick answer is yes. I just think on the second point, one of the variables that's hard is because because they're public meetings and public meetings have to have access to the public. You don't know how many people are going to come. So it's, I know one of the things the health department and I talked about even last year when we were, had the capacity to go back in person, school committee meetings is it's hard to plan for that. The town room works most of the time, but everyone in this room has been in meetings, probably or seen school committee meetings that that would not be space that it would allow for distancing. So you know, it does cause this question of, well, do you just go to like the auditorium and have 800 seats? And then, you know, five people come and feel like they're in this giant auditorium and you're on this huge stage. And I've seen school committees do that. I was watching a school community meeting of another Western Mass town, and they've moved their committees to very, very large group areas that it's independent of how many, it can work spaced even no matter how many people come. But I think from the health perspective, a health department perspective, that, that's an unknown variable for every single meeting is how many people are going to come and, and who monitors and who for lack of a pronoun, polices masking in that space, distancing in that space for folks and the members of the public being that it's going to be as, as a school space. So the next day, but I think that's really the variable. I think that's, in my conversations going back a couple of months was more prevalent than the actual committee members and meeting. It's more, if you get 60 people and you're in the town room, you kind of don't have many options. You could cancel the meeting, which is awful because then you have a whole lot of people came to participate. But you can't really move the meeting once you've announced it and it's posted. So it creates some O M, O M L issues with not being clear how many people are going to come. So you know, that is just, there's some challenges with that. Me personally, I have, I would have no, I'm not trying to disagree or agree with anybody. I don't have any concerns that we could set it up for our group to be distanced and spaced and, and masked. I think it's the unknown variable that changes every meeting that creates some real challenges. The library has some seating, but I've been in school community meetings in that library where there really was no capacity for people to be distanced and to see what was actually happening. So I think as you, as you may continue the conversation in the future about returning in person, I think we are going to have to have some conversation about location. I'm not sure the library is going to be where it's at, you know, because of that, that factor, you know, and I don't want to be in a half or 90% empty auditorium anymore than anyone here does on a stage, but, but we may have to look at that as being perhaps a better option than where we typically add meetings. That has implications for Amherst media and a whole bunch of other factors as well. But I think there are solutions to it. So again, I'm not trying to talk people away from being in person. I think it's just really thinking through how to do it safely would require us to think a little differently than we have about capacity of space. My log done, sorry, but just, I thought it was relevant to your conversation. I didn't want to jump in before you voted because I thought that was your decision, but you know, Peter, your question prompted me to share my thoughts.
No, it's helpful. Thank you very much.
And as we've learned with everything related to COVID and pandemic, nothing is as straightforward and everything is complex. So yeah. Next up on our agenda is future agenda planning. And our next regular meeting of this committee is on the 21st, which as we've said multiple times will be another public forum on the sixth grade, the question of sixth grade location. We also will talk about guidance that we want to, for, for superintendent goals for this year for the, for the Amherst district. And a possible vote on a vaccine mandate, but that said, we'll look at adding a joint topic at another, at the region meeting that is happening next Wednesday. That my understanding is that committee will be talking about a vaccine mandate for staff as well. So we can easily make that a joint topic so that we can keep our conversation moving. Anything else? On folks' minds, I also think we can consider having an S R or stimulus fund spending update at the 21st. If there's, if there's movement, it could be just a performant and the superintendent update if there isn't at all. Mr. Demling?
This could totally be part of the superintendent's update if, Dr. Morris, whatever you like, but I'd be interested in hearing about our enrollment numbers. What, what the early returns on that are and, you know, impacts to various things.
I think it's worthy of its own topic. I think it's a good conversation after we had the downturn last year and we've seen some shifting between schools that I wouldn't say was anticipated. So I think it's a good topic. Well, I think it's deserving of its own bulleted point.
Can we include it when we're talking about that also enrollment within common dante's? And just a sort of a lookout. I'll share this, our agenda planning documents so that folks can see the full, the full schedule, but just to give us sort of broader perspective, as we mentioned in the sixth grade conversation, we are planning to, our next meeting after the 21st would be October 5th. And that will be when we plan to vote on the sixth grade location and would be discussing superintendent goals. That's tendentially what's on, sort of in the scope for that game. Great. And now I believe we return back to my monologue on warrant reports. I shudder to think of the number that we will have at other meetings, but I, Allison McDonald authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $614,289.14 for a warrant dated June 30th, 2021. This includes general fund expenses of $612,390.81 grant fund expenses of $1,139.17 behavioral mental health funds of $729.61 and a gift of $29.55. And I signed that on August 4th, 2021. I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of $653,202.55 dated July 14th, 2021, and I signed that on August 4th, 2021. I authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $6,792.28 for a warrant dated August 1st, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $6,792.28 revolving fund expenses of $1,060. And that's it. Excuse me, I signed that on August 4th. I authorized, I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of $1,222.31 dated January 27th, 2021. Is that correct? Or is that, that's what the warrant report, sorry, says. And it's, I signed that on August 5th, 2021. And two more, we're getting there. And I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of $641,085.87 dated August 11th, 2021, and I sent that on August 9th, 2021. And last, I, Allison McDonald authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $75,313.38 for a warrant dated August 13th, 2021. This includes general fund expenses of $75,313.38 revolving fund expenses of $673.07 and grant fund expenses of $64,962.13 behavioral mental health funds of $456.80 Article 14 funds of $16,960 and Article 20 funds of $33,180. And I signed that on August 12th. And that I believe is all that I signed. Yes, all that. I will say before we move on to the next item that it is, it is actually so, so helpful to be able to sign these electronically. And I recall in past years, we had to find people that would volunteer to go into the offices during the summer to sign warrants. And so this has been actually not, not a burden. So appreciate Doug and your team's efforts in doing that. And so last up, I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Spitzer. There is no discussion. Move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
I'm going to save Mr. Harrington for last. Ms. Ms. Lord?
Lord aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
McDonald aye. And Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Motion passes unanimously and we are adjourned.
One of these days, we're going to fail it.